Well, good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Howard Board Appeals on this date, July 26. The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board of Appeals, which have been brought pursuant but to the bylaw of the town of Howard in the Massachusetts Zoning and Neighboring Act. As required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. During this meeting, the Chair will recognize promptly a member of the Board, Secretary, and attorneys presenting a case to inform the Chair if their protocol is not being followed. While in open session, those wishing to present comments or ask questions regarding a case are required to fill out an information form on the podium. So if you want to step up and make some comments and so forth, there's a sign-in sheet on the podium, request that you would sign, so forth. Okay? I think it asks for your email address and your address. I'd like to have all the Board members identify themselves, please.
Tim Bailey.
Dave Nunley.
Al Donahue.
Brian Sullivan.
Dave Reyer.
John August.
Kenneth Dixon.
Okay. Before we start, I just want to... On the agenda that's posted, I just want to inform anyone here that case number 2023-23 for 15 Hamilton Place, I've been informed by the attorney that they're going to request withdrawal without prejudice. And so does anyone here for that case is letting you know that now before, so you don't have to wait. Okay? Now, the... Also regarding the agenda, given the meeting and tonight as far as the cases and consideration of time, we're going to consider adjusting the agenda. Ken, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we would hear case 2023-24 before we hear 2023-05 tonight.
We first have to start off with 23, just to read the case and then indicate the fact that you're going to motion for be withdrawn without prejudice. So, Al, is...
Case number 2023-23, Ralph and Joan Calvinice, through their attorney, William Crowell. They're the owners of property located at 15 Hamilton Place, assessors map 10 parcel B2-3 in the RM zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit or, in the alternative, a variance to renovate and construct in addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws 325-52-54 in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6 and 8.
And I'd like to make a motion that... Well, actually, you want to make the motion or do you want me to?
Request a motion be made to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay. So, let's... I'd like to make a motion to withdraw the case without prejudice. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second? Okay, by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next case.
Next case is going to be case number 2023-24, Geraldine M. and William J. Griffiths, through their attorney, William Crowell. They're the owners of property located at 34 Edgewood Road, assessors map 6 parcel E2-2 in one zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit or, in the alternative, a variance to renovate and construct in addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw 325-52 and 54, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6 and 10.
Can I have the attorneys to present themselves in the case?
Thank you very much. Attorney William Crowell, representing Phil Griffiths, who's seated here beside me this evening, and his wife, Geraldine, who was not able to be here. Thank you very much to the Board and to Attorney Rose and Attorney Riley and Ford for allowing us to go first this evening. I suspect their case may take a little bit longer than this one. We are located on Edgewood Road, at 34 Edgewood Road, and we are south of Lower County Road as shown on the assessors map they submitted with the petition. Apologize for my voice. Last two weeks I've had... I had about a week and a half of laryngitis, which is not good for a lawyer, and I had to whisper to everybody. So, I got most of it back. In any event, the petitioner is seeking a special permit to renovate and construct in addition to the pre-existing non-conforming single-family residence as shown on the existing conditions and proposed conditions planned by Moran Engineering dated April 21, 2023, and the building and elevation plans by Thomas Moore Design Company submitted with the petition. The... As explained in the narrative, the existing dwelling is conforming on the southerly and westerly sides at 30 feet and 27.5 feet, respectively. The northerly setback will change a little bit. It's 23.4 from the existing porch. The new addition will be 22.6, so it's going down a little bit, less than a foot closer, but still compliant because it's more than 20 feet from that northerly setback. The easterly setback is presently non-conforming at 12.9. It's also going to go down by maybe six inches to 12.2, a little bit closer to the lot line. But this is a classic Gale case situation where we have an existing nonconformity and we're seeking to intensify it by increasing the habitable space that... On the addition here, the habitable space that's located within the 20-foot setback. So, it's a classic Gale case situation there. In addition, the building coverage is conforming at 20.3 percent. 30 percent is max. That will increase slightly to 21.3 percent, but that's still less than 30, so it's conforming. The existing site coverage is already non-conforming at 38 percent. The 35 percent is the max, so it's a little bit over already. Again, Gale case intensification. It will increase by one... Only 1 percent to 39 percent on the site coverage. So, we're seeking a special permit because we are putting on an addition and creating habitable space within the 20-foot... More habitable space within the 20-foot setback, and we're increasing a non-conforming site coverage by 1 percent. We have submitted also the building and elevation plans for the proposed addition, as well as the building commissioner's denial letter referring the case to you folks. Our argument for the special permit this evening is that there will not be a substantial increase in noise, fumes, odors, traffic congestion, or the like, and there will be no substantial detriment... Substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood as a result of the proposed addition and renovations, and ask that you grant the special permit this evening.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Before I ask the Board members for their comments or questions, I forgot to assign voting for this case. So, voting in this case tonight will be Al Donahue, David Nunley, David Reyer, Timothy Bailey, and Ken Dixon. What's the expected timeframe for the construction?
September.
Beginning September.
Yeah.
Six months.
Not even. Not even. Couple of months at the most.
Begin after Labor Day, probably be done in three, four months.
Okay. Oh, we may put the timeframe on it in case things go over, but you've... We'll probably doing that, but that should be fine for your construction timeframe.
Yes. Labor Day to June 30.
The... Other than the embattles notices that were mailed out, did any of the neighbors give you any comments or critique regarding this?
They loved it.
All favorable.
Okay.
I already asked the petitioner.
Okay. Anyways, we received no comments. And also regarding that, the Health Department has no concerns for project as proposed, and there were no other relevant comments, notices, you know, by any other departments in town as well. The... One thing on site coverage, and it just... It's going to be a growing little pet peeve on my part. The... I noticed the fact driveway is primarily shells and regarding site coverage, obviously with shells, personally, I believe the fact that it shouldn't be counted 100 percent as far as site coverage because using shells which, you know, maintain... You know, don't shed the water like driveways do. But just want to point out to the Board that regarding the site coverage and that percentage, the driveway is all shells. That's what I looked at, and I see... I consider that very favorable.
I'm sorry to interrupt Mr. Chairman, but the petitioner is telling me it's stone.
It looked like shells to me. I swallowed it as stone. Regardless, it's pervious and it's stone.
It's site coverage.
Right.
Under the definition in the bylaw.
But you still have less runoff with those than anything else. I have no other questions. Tim?
I have no questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Are there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak to this case? Okay, here none? I'd like to...
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second?
Second? I'm sorry, who seconded? Okay, Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Any discussion? Any further discussion regarding the Board on this or questions to the applicant?
No.
I think it meets the Gale case as Attorney Crowell said in the bylaw. I do think we need the construction restriction, given the tightness of that neighborhood down there, even off-season.
Yeah, and I know... I don't see where there's going to be much of an opportunity... Do you feel there's an opportunity to keep construction vehicles on the property?
Pick up some things on the property? Yeah, because... Yeah, he's... The contractor has done work previously, Mike London, and he's always kept the trucks in the driveway.
Okay.
We're able to move our cars across the street off-season because our neighbors aren't around, so they allow us to park there. So, he has full use of the driveway.
All right. Then I would recommend as far as when the motion is made that we consider the keeping the June 30th to Labor Day situation, construction vehicles on the property, et cetera. And, I think, case, we'd like to hear a motion regarding the case.
Case number 2023-24, Geraldine, Geraldine M. and William J. Griffiths. The Board has granted a special permit, having found that the applicant meets the requirements of bylaws and the Gale-Dedrick case. All work will be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with this application. There'll be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping during the period of June 30 through Labor Day of any year, and during the life of this project, all construction vehicles shall be parked on property and not in any public road, street or road.
I'll second that motion.
I would just like to add to that, the fact that the other thing of... I'd like to amend the... I'd like to amend the motion if I could, to put down that violation of terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of Howard zoning bylaws pursuant to GL 48, Section 7, in the Howard zoning bylaw, as this may be amended from time to time. So, that is my amendment to the motion. Okay?
Well, you're not voting, so Al has to make that amendment.
I'll make the amendment.
Okay.
I'll second Al's amendment.
Ditto. I shall read it. "In accordance of this approval, the violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaws as they may be amended from time to time."
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want me to fill this out? No, I'll fill it out. I just was... I was just... No, I just said if you wanted to use this as reference in the motions, that's all I've got at this point. Okay, it's your call. It's fine with me. It's your call. Thank you. Okay. Al, might I read our next case?
Case number 2023-05, Round Cove Resort Owner LLC and Fort Cove Landing Road LLC. Their attorney, Marion Rose Esquire, owns the property located at 21 Route 28 and Fort Cove Landing Road, also 2 Swan Drive. Assessors map, 115 parcel S1-3, R2 plus H5-2 in the RH-2 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit to alter pre-existing non-conforming motel, hotel, use the amenities, coverage pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw 325-54 in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6.
Thank you, Al. Regarding comments from other departments and so forth, the Board of Health, just going to read in for the record, from Gary Shoner, Senior Health Agent. "I have reviewed the application for a special permit to alter the existing non-conforming amenities coverage and to increase allowed use by more than 7,500 square feet in gross floor area at 2173 Route 28, Fort Cove Landing, and 2 Swan Drive. Project will require review and approval from DEP for the expanded use of the existing groundwater discharge permit. The Health Department will request an updated septic design flow calculation sheet for the file." And from the Conservation Commission, which previously noted the fact that they previously approved the applicant's project. Other than that, there were no other comments from town departments. The assigning... The chair wants to assign members voting tonight. It'll be Al Donahue, myself, Brian Sullivan, David Reyer, Timothy Bailey, and John August. And I'd like to ask the applicant and representative to introduce themselves and any person assisting you tonight. Thank you.
Certainly. Good morning. I've had a long day. I'm Marion Rose from Singer &amp; Singer in Dennisport, and with me...
A little more volume for me, please, Ms. Rose. Thank you.
Absolutely. Let's try this. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Great. Okay. I'm Marion Rose from Singer &amp; Singer in Dennisport, and I'm here on behalf of Round Cove Resort Owners, along with a well-prepared team. With me to my right is John Bologna from Coastal Engineering. We also have in the audience and ready for questions afterwards, if you all have any questions, several people. I'd like to... I guess everyone can wave your hand as I introduce you. Alton Chan, who's a regional manager for Vaquocet. Josette Willis, who's the manager at Vaquocet. Kim Bealan, who is another attorney working on the appeals on this case. Dave Hawke, who's a landscape engineer or architect. And we have Studio Core represented by Alfred and Brooke Core, who are architects. We have been working on this project, and it's probably been a project that you've been aware of since March. We're very happy to be in front of you now to talk about the merits of the project. Tonight, in between March and now, we've been able to do certain things that should make the decisions easier for you. We have filed an 81X plan, which merges the properties here. We've clarified that the ZBA has the authority to make the decisions versus... About the special permits versus the planning board, who has previously done so. Also clarified, as recently as today, that there were two primary purposes allowed in a parcel in the RH2 district. The setback applied depends on the use of a particular structure. So, as a residential use, would have a residential setback, and commercial use would have the What we're going to do today is go through some slides and then open things up for questions if you have any questions. John is going to be my cohort with the slide deck, and you all have hard copies of the slide deck. It'll also be on the screen behind you. So, now I'd like to make sure... That's perfect. We've got the first screen and of the first slide, and the first slide is of the proposed A and B structures. This is what all of the units will look like, A, B, and K on the site. This is the rendering of A and B. Before I start talking about the project, I'd kind of like to frame the role of Vaquocet in the community briefly. Obviously, there's a tax benefit that Vaquocet provides to the community, but moreover, the former owners made certain that Vaquocet was really integrated into the community. And what I mean by that is locals, people from out of town, and community organizations all have a place at Vaquocet. For example, this past week, I was at Vaquocet for the Housing Assistance Corporation. They had a fundraiser there. They raised over $450,000 for affordable housing. While I was there, I saw a kid from my high school son's class who was working on a cart. He's now a freshman at Johnson &amp; Wales, so he's employed there in the summer. The next night, I was on Facebook, and someone from East Timhano who's a... Was celebrating her 40th birthday of Vaquocet at Atlantic, 28 Atlantic, talking about the fancy food and super happy. I think to an extent greater than at other resorts in the area, Vaquocet threads the needle. This is being a place where their local interests and residents and out-of-towners can find something of value and are welcomed. And I think part of the reason Vaquocet's able to do this is because of its stature. I read that there are only 323 five-star resorts in the whole world. There are two on the Cape. There's one in Harwich. And the one in Harwich, Vaquocet, has been a five-star resort rated by Forbes for the past eight years. CBI is just a newcomer. And not in Harwich. Maintaining that highly ranked standing is the engine that makes a lot of the good works that Vaquocet does possible. And part of having a five-star resort is trying to improve on what you have. And so, the current owner is a relatively new owner. This is their first project. It's a priority project for ownership, and it's a project that was a priority for the former owners as well. They actually had a similar project, which would add two floors to what we're calling Buildings A and B back in 2007 and 2008. It wasn't completed, partially because of the economic conditions at the time, but this has been on a slow burn, and now the front burner in terms of what's important to Vaquocet to get done. Can we go to the first aerial? Am I good on sound? Can everybody hear me?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Guys?
Let me know if not. So, the first aerial shows just a general overview of what's at Vaquocet now. The circles are Buildings 1, 2, and 11, and there's a little mental gymnastics going on here. I'm going to ask for your forgiveness, but when I talk about Building 1, as proposed, it'll be Building A. When I talk about Building 2, it's Building B. And when I talk about Building 11, it's Building A. So, that's the way we're working it here. But you can see, when you look at this aerial, and it's fairly well-developed, and that most of the buildings there are circling Round Cove, those buildings are the hotel units. And you can tell that the buildings to the right of the two circles on your left, those are larger buildings. Those are... Most of you were at a site visit this week, past week, and those are the two-story buildings. And so, while these buildings are not going to be exactly the same, they're relatively the same in terms of girth and height. You can go to the aerial view enlarged. So, here it's clear. They're marked Building 11 and 12. So here, it's clear, they're marked Buildings B and K. And you can see, in particular, we're going to talk a lot tonight about Buildings A and B, because I don't think K is particularly controversial. I don't think that Buildings A and B are either, but I think there's a focus on A and B, so we'll stick with that. Buildings A and B are close to the western side of the merged lot. One of the priorities that we heard when we were planning and meeting with the town is the priority of pushing Building A in particular away from the coastal bank. And this gives you a good idea of, it's nestled right on the coastal bank. There's not a lot of room to move it back, because there's a 50-foot setback, and there's not a lot of room to move it to the left or the west, because Four Cove Landing, which is merged with this property, is to the left. So there was limited places to move Building A, and you can see on the following page how we did it. This is the site plan diagram, if you all are with me, and you can see on the screen as well. This is a plan that I showed you all at the site visit. It gives you a good idea of both the existing cottages' footprints and then the proposed structures' footprints. The proposed are in blue, and the existing are these barbell-shaped buildings that are outlined in red. So Building 1, the existing building, is truly, and you can also see the 50-foot setback, the 0 to 50, and the 0 to the 100. The 0 to 50 is a red dotted line, and 0 to 100 is a blue dotted line. And so, Building 1, when it's raised and replaced, the replacement building, Building A, is pushed back away from the buffer. It's still an appropriate distance away from B. It's still an appropriate distance away, and we can speak to that, this is asked, to the dwelling, Four Cove Landing. You can see that Building B is truly, the footprint is slightly bigger, but it's not moved particularly farther back. It's no closer, truly, to Cove Landing than the existing building. Building A is closer, obviously, to Cove Landing's closest property line. It's about 28 feet closer than the existing Building 1, but it is still conforming as to setbacks. It's over 60 feet from that property line. I think it's 64. And Building B is about 54 feet, as it exists now and as proposed. I wanted you to see, Rose Cottage is also shown on this site plan diagram. It's immediately above Building B. It's an, it has a rear deck. And you'll see on other site plans, it's closer to the dwelling at Two Cove Landing by, two times closer than either A or B are. And the parking area there is the parking area with the two handicap spots. Those are the two handicap spots that will accommodate the two new ADA compliant rooms that are in A and B. It's important to look at the zoning table and to look at the parking tables, simply for the reason that, other than amenities coverage, everything here is conforming. There's nothing that's not conforming. We're conforming to all setbacks. We're conforming, we're not creating any new nonconformities. We're conforming to coverage, site coverage and building coverage. We are nonconforming as to amenities coverage now, and we are asking to increase that nonconforming amenities coverage by 0.1%, by about 843 feet. I wanted to talk, mention that we have accessible units in this location. I've moved on to the next slide. Again, you can see where these are. It's important, because these are going to be modern, the rooms, the existing structures are from 1967, so they've been very well-maintained, but they're from 1967. I am from 1967, so it's, you know, fairly old. And so, they do need to be replaced, the systems, you know, the plumbing, all of that is ready to be replaced. So with that, the scale of an ADA, an accessible room is something that a new building can accommodate so much better than trying to work with an existing building. You can see that there's water view accessible, there's an accessible king room, there's a garden view, accessible double queen room in Building A, and there's also, interestingly, a second-floor room in Building K. Because of the elevations of Building K, someone can, it can accommodate someone coming in on the second floor. Before I get to the meat of the project, too, I want to hit on the amenities coverage. I have the plan before me, which is the demolition and erosion control plan, and I just wanted to flag it, because the reason why they are, or we are increasing amenities coverage, in large part, is due to widening some of the paths. The paths are used for both guests, and they're also used for those carts that zoom around to service all of the units. And so, those paths are very narrow now, so they're slightly wider. And if you toggle between this slide and the following slide, which is the proposed, you can see the slight difference in the width. And you can also see, if you've walked on Vaquocet, and perhaps we should have done this at the site visit, one of the places where the pathway is going to be changed is at Building K. The elevations over on the east side of Building K are pretty dramatic. It's, from what Dave Hawke has told me, caused pretty dramatic golf cart rides down those hills. And so, what we're trying to do is redesign those. And so, when those were redesigned, and you can see, it caused for a longer pathway. Also, one of the reasons, and I don't want to spend too much time on this, is that they have little traffic, mini golf cart traffic circles. Just there are a couple of things that are going to make this work better. When we were trying to design this, we asked Alton, we asked Josette, what would make the resort work better when we have these opportunities? Because you can't change this kind of landscaping where it's sensitive. It's hard to do it, you know, in a piecemeal fashion, so we're trying to do it all at the same time. The next page I have is an elevations page. It's just showing you that we are conforming as to height, gives you an idea of what the buildings will look like. And again, if you're wondering what the buildings will look like, the front page of our presentation gives you a great idea of what the buildings will look like built and materials used.
Excuse me. Can we just go back to the previous slide again?
Certainly.
If I missed it, I apologize.
Yeah.
This is the one that's showing the blue and the red lines.
Yes.
What are they again? Buffer zones. One's the 50-foot setback, and the others are 100-foot setback.
So the red dotted line is the 0 to 50-foot setback for conservation, and the blue dotted line is the 0 to 100-foot conservation buffer zone.
And what does that mean as far as buffer zone going 15 and 100 feet?
0 to 50 is a no-build zone.
Yep.
And 0 to 100, there, I might let John speak to it more, but there are mitigation ratios for, you know, hardscape and structure in those areas. And we have met those. Conservation looked at what we did and applied those ratios, and we have met those.
When looking at the proposed Building A, and it seems, part of it seems to be inside of the-
Yes. I can speak to that. There's, if you have existing structure in the 0 to 50, you can, you can't create new structure in the 0 to 50. If there is a footprint in the 0 to 50, it can be maintained. But what we did here is, the original footprint of Building A was roughly 1,900 square feet, the footprint. And so, 1,500, give or take, it's more than 1,500, I think it's 1,586, but 1,586 square feet was taken out.
That's outside of the 50-foot.
Yes. It's when it was pushed back, and so then there were about 326 feet that are still remaining inside. And so, it was a double benefit, because the footprint that was pushed out of the 0 to 50, that's where bulk of the mitigation for the conservation permitting went. It went there, because that's the priority for conservation, is to put it in the most sensitive area. So at the site visit, you know, that's where the patios were.
Yep.
And all that. That is all going to be planted properly by Wilkinson, according to conservation order conditions.
Okay. Thank you.
Same thing for on the right-hand side, where we're moving that pathway and reorienting the pathway a little higher up. The original pathway is on the lower right-hand side in a sensitive area, and that also is a source of mitigation plantings.
I have a question on that slide.
Certainly.
Over there on the left side, it says Round Cove Resort, and I can't read what that is underneath there. And then you can explain what it is for me, please.
Okay.
Right there, the end of that path.
Layout materials.
On the left side, which I guess would be what the east, the west side. Round Cove Resort, or it looks like Boner or something, but I can't-
I'm having trouble.
Quite make it out.
Where you are.
Round Cove Resort Owner LLC.
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay.
But it's still the resort property.
Yes, it's still the resort property. So sorry.
That was really the basis.
Okay, yes, so sorry.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can zoom in over here.
Okay. I'm now at the floor plan slide. So it's dangerous when a lawyer does math, but I've attempted to do some math here. And there's roughly, there's less than a 10,000-square-foot increase in gross floor area. Originally, the three buildings, 1, 2, and 11, had about 6,700 square feet of gross floor area. It's increased because of the second floor on each of these buildings to about 1,600, 416 square feet. So the buildings are, I mean, the units are a different size. The units are set up as two doubles and one king, and they're suites. And so, they're designed for, if you put, and there are four of those units on each floor. So on the back or the front of each floor, you've got two units, and they're designed for six people. On the first floor, there are patios outside, so ground-floor patios, and they're bigger than the decks, which are above. The ground-floor patios have more, what they call programming. They've got a spa and a fireplace, and so that takes up more room and is appropriate on a ground floor. On the second floor, the decks are about eight feet deep. They're not as deep as the patios. And those simply were expected to have seating for two to four people. But the buildings, as I was getting back to, the, if you just did simple math and divided the numbers I gave, on average, the units are about 560 square feet of gross floor area. They've increased to about 684 square feet gross floor area. And the rough footprint, if you divide the 6,000, 6,749 by 3, is about 2,200 square feet for the footprint of existing. And of proposed, it's about 2,700 square feet. So just mentioning those to give you an idea, it's not exploding in size in terms of footprint, but we are adding second floors. The second floors are conforming as to height, and we are under 10,000 square feet in terms of gross floor area. I'm going to skip the next slide. So, in terms of what's proposed, because we talked a lot about what's existing, what's proposed, just so everybody's on the same page, is we are proposing to raise and replace three existing one-story structures that were built in 1967 with three proposed two-story structures. There are 12 units in the existing structures. There will be 24 units in the proposed structures, a 12-unit increase. Pulling the footprint away from the coastal bank, providing for mitigation plantings, and a decrease in square footage of hardscape in the 0 to 50. Enhancing, and meaningfully enhancing, the landscaping and hardscaping. About hardscaping, I'm including the brick pathways. Altering and improving the parking areas near Rose Cottage, including the redesign of the handicapped parking areas, there are two of those there, and there's another to service K. And the path access to the three new ADA compliant units, and improving access for service and guests overall. So that's the general scope of what we're doing.
Excuse me, Attorney Rose, are all the trees going to be evergreens here?
All of the trees are going to be evergreens, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And so, this is a good plan, both to show you the landscaping, Building A and B, obviously, but also to show you how it relates to the pathways, and it's just a good overall, a good overall slide. You can see, if you look straight above, you can see the property line. It's right below enhanced, so that's the property line with Two Cove Landing. You all were, most of you all, it's up to you, were there at the site visit, and the interesting thing about it is, you know, you're going up a significant hill to get up to Two Cove Landing. It's about 10 feet or so. You can see that this gray rectangle is the patio that is up at the top of Two Cove Landing. When we were there, you can see that about one-third of it is on Two Cove Landing's property, and the rest is on the resort's property. And it's significant for a couple of reasons, but one of the reasons is the elevation, I guess, towards the cottages is a little bit higher even than the yard area and the dwelling for Two Cove Landing. So it's not as if the resort is going to be planting the trees at a lower level, where it would take longer for them to make a meaningful screen. They're going to be planting significantly sized trees, 14 to 16-feet trees, anywhere from 10 to 12 to 14 to 16-foot-sized trees. If we want to get into the numbers, Dave Hawke can speak to that. But there's going to be a real, as-planted screen, which will do a good job screening what's proposed.
Real quick, Mr. Chairman, do we want to ask questions as we go?
I think that'd be fine, if you have a quick question on a particular slide.
Yes, for this slide right here, you have the retaining wall down to the left. There was kind of brief discussion at the, you pointed out at the site tour where it was going, the exact height of it. was going, the exact height of it, was it's going to be under four feet, or do you know under four feet?
Under four feet.
Okay, and then with the planting plans, was that kind of worked out in conjunction with the abutters directly?
We tried to do that. We have asked, there's... A view is not protected. There's no right to a view, you know, unless you have made a separate private arrangement for that, paid for that, recorded that, all of that. That's not been done here. So there are, you know, if there were no screening, this would change the view in some way, but the view is not protected. And so we, but the view, you know, people do care about views. And so we have offered to, in the first proposal, we had the view corridor in between buildings A and B was going to be more narrow than what's existing, what's existing right now. And so we offered that. The abutters can speak to that, but they said that they were not ready to do that. It wasn't the appropriate time to talk about screening. So because screening is what we can do, we decided to do the most, I mean, we're trying to screen this well. We're sort of in a catch-22 with that. So we're trying to do the most robust screening we can do. And to the point of the view, I believe, I mean, because so much of the property in between the resort and, and Two Cove Landing's rear yard, well, it's the resort's property. Naturalized trees have grown there in the past. There hasn't been much of a view. When you were there, you could see, like, in front of building A or building one, there are a lot of trees there. Those trees will be, some of them will be taken down as part of this construction, but the trees we are planting are going to block that view. But that same kind of block view was consistent throughout. Even if that weren't the case, trees could be planted there independent of this project, which would affect the view. So the view is there now, but it's, it could be gone, you know, another day or another series of years.
Understood, thank you.
Okay.
I believe you said in your narrative you're going to leave the existing patio there even though it's on your property.
We are for now, we're, we are, we, they have, it's not memorialized in any way. Right now, it's a permissive use. That use can be taken away. You know, we're in the process of trying to get something permitted, and we are, you know, if we can work with neighbors, we would like to work with neighbors. So we're not trying to do something that would agitate neighbors in the middle of a permitting process.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question with regard to the trees. Are they going to be between ten and fourteen feet?
Ten and sixteen feet.
Is the sixteen-foot of the maximum growth on that tree?
No, it's not. So what we're trying to do is to have trees that, and this is much more expensive to do, frankly, and every time you go up from eight to ten into twelve to fourteen into fourteen to sixteen, it's much more expensive to get the tree to establish and, and to grow, and the trees are more expensive by an order of magnitude as well. But the trees will grow, are expected to grow higher. Dave Hawkes can talk to that. If you'd like him to speak to that immediately right now, we can bring him up.
We'll talk about that a little later on.
Okay. But no, they're not limited to fourteen feet. They're expected to grow. They're like to thirty feet. So I'm going to skip, unless there are any questions, the next slide, which is just showing a bit of the parking area that's missing near Rose Cottage. And then the following slide is building K. Again, it shows you, this is a good place to see where there's mitigation planting in sort of the dark green on the lower right-hand corner. And you can see where the new pathway is being built, which is longer than the pathway that's being taken away, which is on the lower right-hand side. And the next slide is what I think is the most important slide in my deck. And so this is the perspective sketch of the landscape that we are proposing, landscape screening that we are proposing.
Where is the view from?
If you look at these little, you can see, it's sort of midway in the, through, in the yard, in the Shelton's yard. So it's not at the patio.
We're looking for Shelton's yard towards...
Looking at the Shelton's yards towards...
Those buildings A and B.
Yes, exactly. Not at the patio, not...
If I could, look at your left side of that. That tells you where they're standing, that the blue arrow, I believe, shows you your view.
Oh, thank you. That's why I have Ken on the board here.
Oh, that's okay.
But he's got something.
Thank you.
So this would be, I mean, we don't, we don't show the patio here, and this is from further back than the patio, but this is roughly looking over the patio to buildings A and B as proposed. And it's not six years from now, it's as they're proposed to be planted. And so you can see, there's a person on the right hand in the foreground. That person is used as, and we can, if anybody has a question about how this perspective is done, I've got my people, and they can explain it. But the person in the foreground is roughly six feet tall, and so you can see six feet tall on the row of trees, and you can see how tall those trees, that's like a fourteen-foot tree, where you've got six and six and a bit above it. And then you can see the sixteen feet. So what we are proposing to do is to block the decks. There, what would be facing to Cove Landing with A and B would be four decks. Four decks that would, are designed, the units are designed to accommodate twelve people. So six in A, six in B. These trees would block the view of the decks and eventually block the view of the roofs of the buildings as well. It's kind of interesting here because, because Two Cove Landing is at an elevation above, what you're seeing, you know, from a perspective, is really like one floor of a house on a roof if there were no screening. But with the screening, you're seeing some of the roof.
One question on the screening, and looking at the previous slides, there appears to be a depth of trees. So it's just not one row of evergreens?
Correct.
And the, the, the other trees behind it, are they going to be similar heights, or they just, what are you looking there? I mean, so do we have one row of sixteen footers and maybe another row of smaller trees just behind it, and what is the depth there?
Why don't we have Dave Hawke, would you like to come speak to that at the podium now, because it's better to hear it from the designer?
If he would, if he would.
Well, the fire department's here.
Yeah, something's going on.
Good evening again. Dave Hawke, Hawk Design. Basically, what happens is the plantings that you're seeing beyond the evergreen screen, the evergreen screen is the high point, and that occurs right here. Let me just point this out. Plantings then, this slopes down to that four-foot wall that we were talking about. So there's a slope that goes down there. Those plantings are shrubs that terraced up the hill.
Okay.
And there's some evergreen shrubs, et cetera, but those are not evergreen trees.
No significant height.
Correct. And those face toward the wequoset property on that slope. So the slope goes down to the wall, to that four-foot wall, and that then would be all planted. The evergreen screen is located up closer toward the property line there, and that's what you're seeing in the sketch.
If you look at a row of, or decide to plant the trees you have and so for landscaping, and I realize we've been talking about, you know, visual mitigation, that's the correct word. Is there any consideration, or what impact do they have regarding impacting noise and sound and so forth? Is it, do you have, a row of trees like this?
Yeah.
Is there any measurable, I mean, is it just...
I don't know the measurements for it. I think it's probably, I think there are other ways to deal with the noise than it's, the screening is more for light and, and for blocking, massing.
Right. So there's no real impact on that?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Anybody else have any questions for the designer?
I'll be here if you need me.
Thank you.
Okay. So in terms of effect on, on the neighbors, I mean, the changes, we've said, are adding the second floor and moving A about twenty-eight feet closer to Two Cove Landing. I mean, those changes are proposed to be made. But in terms of how these, whether these would be substantially more detrimental, it's, it's hard to prove a negative, but we're going to go through light and noise and, and other issues to, to address these as best we can. In terms of dis, here we think that distance and that elevation and the screening are ways that light, noise, and sound can be ameliorated if they exist. In terms of distance, the Two Cove Landing dwelling is roughly a hundred and fifty square, a hundred and fifty feet from building A, oh, sorry, a hundred and seventy feet from building A and about a hundred and fifty feet from building B. And the elevation, it's important because I've really been focusing on, on the decks. The patios, that is one place where the elevation where that hillside is a really good buffer of noise. And so I believe that that is going to make a big difference. And so I'll say that. And in terms of screening, the trees, as I mentioned, are elevation even higher than the patio at the top of the hillside. They're at maximum height, and they're large trees have immediate impact. The decks will be fully screened immediately. Say once more, the abutters own no view easements over the property.
I'm sorry, I can't hear the noise back here.
Sir, oh, you've got a, yes. The abutters at Two Cove Landing do not have a view easement over the property. The applicant, as we've said, allows the patio to be used. There are trees that are growing on the resort property that have obstructed that round cove view from Two Cove Landing in the past, and trees may grow there in the future to obstruct the same view. We believe that no unreasonable condition related to lighting is anticipated. The short answer here is that same screening I've spent five or 10 minutes talking about should help with the lighting too. But we do, and we have, we've just gotten it today, a photometric plan, which shows that there's no light leakage onto the resort, onto Two Cove Landing, but it was late breaking. And I think what I have now shows that from the distances, from the decks, the fact that the lights are dark sky compliant, and the fact that that lights are on timers, so they're not going to be on all night. There are motion sensors, so they're not going to be on when someone... And there's also, there was, because we've gone through a planning board process as well, we've heard other issues raised. In terms of interior lighting, the resort has a turned-down service every night. And so every night, between seven and eight, I believe, someone comes to each room, turns down the bed, but also closes the shutters. Some rooms have shutters, some rooms have blackout blinds, but they close those. So there's another way that light would be limited on the site. But mainly, it's the screening, it's the kind of light chosen, which is dark sky compliant, and it's the distance between the structures on the resort site, which are well over fifty feet away, from the closest point on Two Cove Landing and over a hundred and fifty feet away from the dwelling. The other thing I would say is Rose Cottage, which I mentioned before, is closer to the dwelling at Two Cove Landing by a factor of two. It's roughly a hundred, sorry, it's roughly eighty feet away from the dwelling, and there have been no complaints about the light. They have an exterior deck that's spacing. They also have screening in between natural woods in between, but we just don't believe that that's going to be a substantially detrimental effect on the neighborhood.
I have a question somewhat related to the lighting, is, will Quosset keep this building open all year?
Quosset does not now, no, but there is a hope, this is...
I know they've announced plans to...
Right, there is a plan to try to increase operations. So I, I think if you're talking about net benefits to the town and, and, you know, everyone, town, that would be a bigger benefit.
Well, I'm trying, also for the lighting issue is, you know, it seems to me that when you get into the fall, and certainly the early spring...
Right.
It's unlikely any lights are going to be on in this building.
Correct. Maybe as, as, as conditions change, they hope to be open year-round.
I have a question with regards to that dirt pathway that we use back and forth. Is that going to be asphalted or brick on it, or is that just going to remain as it does right now, it's natural state?
Remain as it's natural state. Are you talking about...
The plan shows it as shell.
Connection to...
Yes.
Are you talking about the connection to Cove Landing Road, which, I'm not sure...
Crushed stone, yeah, transition to crushed stone.
We got to the property at two. The carts that are going to be used, are they electric, if you know?
I do not know that, but I, I believe that I can have someone speak to that. For the record, Alton Chung said, yes, they are electric.
And are there any golf carts allowed up there from the course, or do they remain strictly on the course? I didn't know whether the players could actually take a cart and drive it back up into the main property to their roaming.
They primarily are on that path.
Okay.
And they go to Two Cove Landing in return, so they, they're staying on all the interior parts of the resort.
All right.
I'm going to move on to noise, if there are no more questions about light. The resort's commitment to ensuring each of its guests' enjoyment of the property complements its similar, its similar commitment to avoid unreasonable interference with neighbors' enjoyment of their property. We believe in a practice that noise on-site would annoy other guests on-site before it's likely to annoy people off-site. That's not always the case, and so the resort also has procedures. They deal, they're a hotel, and they're a five-star hotels, they've got to deal with the guests that they have, but also ensure that other guests are not annoyed... They've got to deal with the guests that they have, but also ensure that other guests are not annoyed by too much noise. So there are people at night who walk the site. There are people at night who answer the phones if there is a complaint. They calibrate, and Alton can talk to this if you'd like to go into examples, but they calibrate how to work with, you know, guests depending on what the situation is. But they have alternate places to move people. If someone's loud on, you know, in their room, and they would like to go to a fire pit area, which is away from other guests, closer to the water, that's an option. They have places, they have outdoor movie situations, they have a restaurant. And so, and outdoor seating over there. So there are places to move people if they're in their guest units. And I'm not just saying this, I tried to see if there were complaints that are part of the record. And so I spoke with the building department and Shayla, who's been the administrator in the building department for the last five years before this last year, confirmed that there have been no complaints of noise for McQuocet going directly to the building department. I also asked for records from the police department for the last five years. There have been three complaints called in on McQuocet. And in each of those complaints did not escalate, the worst complaint was, I think, prior to a wedding, this is sort of the thing everyone worries about, people being too loud. People did not respond to people in management at McQuocet. So McQuocet called the police department. When the police department came, the noise was shut down. There was no need to escalate it further. So that is not what McQuocet prefers to do. They prefer to go in a calibrated way to shut down the noise and make sure that everyone is enjoying their time there. But there's a commitment, a strong commitment to making sure that noise on the site, even in these limited periods, once in five years, it was that extreme. They respond to that. They also, of course, meet the noise bylaw for the town of Harwich in terms of weddings and events and things like that for amplified noise.
I have one question, one more. The fire suppression units that are in these buildings, how would a fire be handled should the fire department need to be called? Are there hookups for the fire department within that?
I just. I just went wondering.
Yes, thank you, sir. Yeah, I mean, there's our fire hydrants on the site. We did review the plan with the fire chief. The buildings, we've fully suppression, well, fire suppression system installed in the buildings themselves. And, you know, there's like a swept path analysis that the fire department looks for to make sure they get their vehicles in and out of the site.
Thank you.
I'd say one more thing in terms of noise. When you live next to a hotel or next to a neighbor, if you're not in the woods by yourself, there's some noise that's anticipated and reasonable. No noise is not the expectation here. Here, Rose Cottage already exists. There's a deck on the back. During the planning board process, the abutters said that they never made a complaint about noise. They have heard noise like a telephone call or somebody's music on an iPhone, but that appeared to be reasonable noise. I believe that is reasonable noise. And so in comparison, again, in terms of distances, A and B, the decks are at least 150 feet away from the dwelling at Two Cove Landing. It's ironic, but the place where, you know, if there were any noise to be heard, and again, I don't think it would be obnoxious noise, it would be on the patio, which is two-thirds on the resort property. This project, as proposed, provides meaningful benefits to the neighborhood and the town as well as the resort. The project will provide significant benefits to the town of Harwich and the neighborhood. The town's expressed priority was to move building A back away from the coastal bank. And as we've discussed, that's been done in a meaningful way. The footprint of building one was about 1,900 square feet within the 0 to 50 buffer. And as proposed, building A is only 326 feet within the buffer. In addition, there's meaningful mitigation here that meets the Harwich Conservation's strict and conservative standards. It was interesting, the abutters have appealed to the state, the Conservation Commission decision. And so this week I sat in on the NEPA hearing for this. And the state representative's, one of his main comments was, can you move this building even further back away from the coastal bank? So they are happy with, Conservation of Harwich is happy with what we've done. And the result of the appeal is the state saying, is there an alternative to make it even closer to Two Cove Landing? And the response that we gave was, we're trying to thread this needle. We're trying, we have to make sure we have that 50-foot buffer from that property line. We could have pushed it back a little more, closer to Four Cove, to Two Cove Landing, but because of the change, we were also trying to add those ADA compliant rooms, add the pathways from the parking area and trying to do this in an amenable way. And so that's how we got to where the footprints are now. And they're not as close as they could be technically. Still conforming to the zoning bylaw in terms of setback.
Was there a decision reached by MEMA?
It's still under review.
Okay.
The comment period will expire on Friday, and then they have whatever is number days for them to review their, submit their, their decision.
So again, there are these three fully compliant ADA units. There's the redesigned two, three parking areas. There's the pathways that are compliant for people who are handicapped to get to the new rooms. Stormwater design complies with the town bylaws. There's a value to the neighborhood and the town and the continued success of this five-star resort, both in terms of reputation, employment, increased tax receipts, and land values. The resort has been a good neighbor to the community, and the current ownership is committed to continuing this tradition. The resort hosts many nonprofit benefits, including, as I mentioned, the Housing Assistance Corporation, Cape Cod Community College, and the Cape Symphony, all in a manner that aims to avoid any unreasonable impact on, of the gatherings on guests or nearby neighbors. Resort fees, resort guest fees are contributed towards the funding. The one, sorry, 1% of the resort guest fees are contributed towards the funding of community projects and nonprofits. This year, the entities that are benefiting from that are the Lighthouse Charter School, WECAN, and the Harwich Conservation Trust. There's a new program that the new owners have introduced. Dogs are allowed to stay at McQuocet. You would hate to know how expensive it is for dogs to stay at McQuocet. But 20% of the cost. Yep, 20% of the cost of having your dog stay at McQuocet goes directly to the Brewster Animal Shelter. Employees have sustained record of volunteering in the community. Alton won't say this, but at the planning board, one of the planning board members recognized his work at the food bank. It was sustained work during COVID. He spent many hours there. In addition, the resort makes substantial monetary and in-kind donations. Replacing the buildings that are over 50 years old with up-to-date buildings, which will provide expected amenities and modestly increase the number of units for resort guests, is the engine which will help maintain the resort's reputation, economic bottom line, and its ability to continue to provide for guests and local residents and the charities and nonprofits that both groups collectively support. The applicant is seeking special permits from the zoning board of appeals under section 325, 254B, and chapter 48, section six, to both alter pre-existing non-conforming amenities coverage and to extend and alter pre-existing non-conforming use, the hotel motel use. The Harwich zoning bylaw provides that structure, whether conforming or not, may be by special permit changed, altered, or raised or replaced with a new structure on the same site, provided the board of appeals determines that the proposal will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure, and that it will not cause any or contribute to any undue nuisance, hazard, or congestion in the neighborhood, the relevant districts in the town, zoning districts or the town. And the structure will be used for the same use as existing use or a conforming one. The applicant respectfully submits that the desired special permit relief can be granted in accordance with all the above referenced special permit criteria and will not be substantially more detrimental to the exist, the neighborhood or the town than the existing conditions because there will be an expansion of ongoing use. The proposed structures will conform to the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw. Building coverage will remain conforming and significantly under the maximum allowed. It's 8.4% where 30% is allowed. Site coverage will remain conforming. It's 32.4% where 35% is allowed. Pre-existing non-conforming amenities coverage will minimally increase from 23.9% to 24% where 15% is allowed. And I've gone through, I won't review it again, but the reasons why maintenance coverage is increasing. I will say that the increase in amenities coverage will not affect the neighbors' use and enjoyment of their home. They won't see the paths because of the elevation. The Harwich Conservation Commission has unanimously approved the proposed redevelopment, and we've talked about the reasons there's real improvement environmentally by pulling back building A from where building one currently exists. The maximum building height in the RH2 district is 30 feet. As shown in the submitted elevation plans, proposed hotel structures will be conforming two stories at a height of 29.4 feet. Runoff is anticipated to be in the form of roof drainage only, and such drainage will be collected and treated on-site. We don't believe there'll be any adverse impacts to surface water quality or groundwater quality. The proposed redevelopment project includes stormwater management, best management practices to manage and recharge and infiltrate stormwater runoff. Hardscape runoff will also be treated using infiltration basins that are sized for a 100-year, 24-hour storm event. By infiltrating for the 100-year storm event, the proposed work will reduce the potential erosion to the coastal bank by stormwater runoff significantly.
Just out of curiosity, regarding all the runoff water management, where are these basins on the property where all this water goes? And once it's treated, then what happens?
Well, there's a sole dispersion system, you know, essentially dry wells.
Yeah.
And it's residential scale, so there are individual leach pits that are dispersed throughout the year. Yeah, each building, you know, at close proximity to the, to the gutters and downspouts.
And how they maintain over the years and so forth? Once they're built, I mean.
Well, they, they do need to be maintained periodically. You know, again, coming off of the roof in particular, it's essentially clean water. So, you know, keeping the gutters clean and things like that's probably the most active way of preventing the leaching air from getting fouled up.
Thank you, I was just trying to increase my education and it wasn't, wasn't a special permit, so thank you.
Almost done. Okay. The redevelopment will be connected to the existing wastewater treatment facility. This facility is governed by the groundwater discharge permit issued by the state of Massachusetts Environmental Protection Department. Utilities serve the site, will not change. We've talked about the landscape plan. We believe that the landscape plan provides a fully screened buffer between the proposed structures and the abutters' rear yard. This is a landscape plan with trees that are larger than is normally required, and there's an intent to make this a meaningful buffer. There's no negative change anticipated in artificial light, noise, litter, or odor. Their lighting plans and cut sheets have been provided. Lighting will be, comply with the Harwich lighting regulations and will be dark sky compliant. We've talked about how the lights will be on the rear-facing decks, subject to motion sensors to limit use, and also on timers that won't be on overnight. There'll be turned-down services as well. The hotel motel use is a use allowed by special permit in the zoning district, and the resort's use has been longstanding and grandfathered. The resort's a good neighbor, a shared interest with the neighbors and its guests, ensuring that noise generated in the resort is not unnecessarily disruptive. We believe that the proposal, as shown, is designed to be aesthetically complimentary to the overall property. The buildings are less than 6,000, 6,000 square feet in floor area each and are comparable to the other existing co-facing two-story buildings adjacent to the proposed work. The buildings will be of comparable materials and color palette, and the plantings and walkways will be designed to complement the structures and function as well. We believe this proposal will not adversely affect the public health, safety, and convenience or general welfare of the town. The redevelopment will not affect the flow of traffic on or off the resort. Again, there are 12 units, and there's sufficient parking as provided. There'll be no meaningful change in the operations as a result, as a result of the addition of the 12 units. And again, we're providing the three modern, fully modern ADA compliant units. For all of the reasons above, the petitioner respectfully requests the board make a determination the proposal will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structures and site conditions, including the amenities, and that it will not cause or contribute to any undue nuisance, hazard, or congestion in the neighborhood, the relevant zoning districts or the town, and grant new special permits and make a finding as requested above to allow the work to be completed as shown in the submitted plans. Thank you all for your attention. Long.
I'm, in a moment, I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. Okay, just take a little break here, but before I do that, I just want to confirm with Attorney Rose and Attorney Ford and Derry Riley that you received my email this morning regarding the town council's answers to a few of my questions?
I did receive it.
Okay, just let me sure you had that.
Thank you.
All right. And the board, I sent that out to you as well, but I just want you to know that I did forward it to all the attorneys that are involved with this case to make sure that everyone was on the same page. And just like to take a five-minute recess.
Good.
Get back then to questions from the, comments from the board, and then I'll open it up to public media.
Okay, four, I'm trying. Thank you so much. If you'd call me if you have any questions about it.
I won't.
Thanks for that.
So we have one here.
Sure, tonight, just all...
Uh, certificate in December, this, this, saw the certificate G I X, and that point, when you're in spatial analysis, and emotional, saying, uh, this part, I might, uh, I might do, like, the full message with that, I'm not sure, spatial analysis, I don't see that, but...
Yes.
So, yeah.
Right, because the...
Yeah.
Code by, you know, so it's a question of...
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yep. Just, I mean, just thought that, you know...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. So my, my process was the, yes, the database penetration.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. But, uh, yeah, so that's been good, and then, um, just, I, I...
Yeah.
Yeah, just, uh, any kind of...
We'll see, you know, the sovereigns, yeah.
Yeah.
Other ones around Washington, D.C., probably.
Yeah.
So all that, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
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 Yeah.
How long, I'm sorry, we've got bits.
Sorry, Audrey, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's very, like, a lot more going on.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but, uh, yeah. Pretty much, yeah.
So what we see on screen is what gets broadcast.
Pretty much, yeah. I can go back and forth between you guys talking, and then I got...
Yeah, sure.
...a couple over here, which point, screening, I can't do it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Try to frame the shot properly, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So you're engineering, Ian Engineering? Okay. You guys do G I X at all?
Really?
Yeah, I'm running, well, I've been working...
I was watching soccer.
So I'm, uh, I'm running, I'm a graduate, so I'm doing for a...
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I'm gonna work for, for a...
Yeah.
Yeah. I do, I live in Seattle. Yeah.
Do you have numbers?
I live in Seattle.
Seattle, okay.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah.
Business card here.
Sure.
I don't think I have these...
I don't think I have these business cards anymore.
I know, I had to put some in my wallet.
Yeah. Did you practice in New York City?
I didn't.
You didn't?
Yeah.
Was that, was that intense?
It was very intense. I did not want to get...
Really, you had a lot of personalities that you had to?
Um, I did litigation there in Atlanta, and then I moved to New York.
Yeah.
And I did not want to do litigation in Atlanta, because it was awful. People were terrible. But I did finance for it.
Yeah.
Not go to Atlanta.
Yeah.
Thanks for that.
So we get in December, this, this, saw the certificate G I X, and that point, when you're in spatial analysis, and emotional, saying, uh, this part, I might, uh, I might do, like, the full message with that, I'm not sure, spatial analysis, I don't see that, but...
Yes, they do.
So, yeah.
Code by, you know, so it's a question of...
Yeah.
Sorry.
At least we're in a period of...
Yep.
Just, I mean, just thought that, you know...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, well, that's...
Yeah.
Right.
So, that's all.
Right, because the...
Yeah.
Code by, you know, so it's a question of...
Yeah.
Sorry.
At least we're in a period of...
Yep.
Just, I mean, just thought that, you know...
Okay.
Just, I mean, just thought that, you know...
Okay.
Just, I mean, just thought that, you know...
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Because the...
Yeah.
Code by, you know, so it's a question of...
Yeah.
Right.
At least we're in a period of...
Yep.
Just, I mean, just thought that, you know...
Yeah.
Just, I mean, just thought that, you know...
Yeah.
Just, I mean, just thought that, you know...
Yeah.
Just, I mean, just thought that, you know...
Yeah.
Just, I mean, just thought that, you know...
Yeah.
Just, I mean, just thought that, you know...
Yeah.
Just, I mean, just thought that, you know...
Yeah.
Just, I mean, just thought that, you know...
Yeah.
Just, I mean, just thought that, you know...
Sure.
Tonight, just all... Uh, certificate in December, this, this, saw the certificate G I X, and that point, when you're in spatial analysis, and emotional, saying, uh, this part, I might, uh, I might do, like, the full message with that, I'm not sure, spatial analysis, I don't see that, but...
Yes, they do.
So, yeah.
So, yeah.
So, yeah.
Right, because the...
Yeah.
Code by, you know, so it's a question of...
Yeah.
Right.
At least we're in a period of...
Yeah.
Yep.
Just, I mean, just thought that, you know...
Yep.
Just, I mean, just thought that, you know...
Yep.
Right.
Exactly.
Getting any golf in now?
I played the other day. All right. I play, uh, next week, a couple times, and as Dave can attest to it...
What's that? You found it? I did, brought him in, too.
Offland, we desire.
Oh, you play with my brother-in-law?
Uh, no, just...
Oh, that's Dave, okay, I agree.
What he played.
Okay.
Yeah. And, uh, it's, it's ugly, but I enjoy it.
That's good. Okay, we all, uh, ready, come? Okay, we're, we're live. Um, I wanted to ask the board if they have any questions, so, for comments, but we'll start first, all right, might? Can we, uh...
Yes, please, on there.
Okay. I forgot, obviously, we're, uh, we're online to a handful of homes in Harwich tonight, you know, so, the, um, a lot of times I have a habit of, before, on every, every application, of going through it and, and seeing, you know, how I'd, if it, we approved a project, how I would write the, write the motion as a draft and so forth, okay? And one thing that, that, and I always use the, looking at how the application was written, there is nothing, as far as in that, you know, on the, how we wrote, read the case here this, this evening, there's no discussion of the raise and replace. Often when we, we have people that are tearing down houses, or, and it's typically houses in this town, and it's, you know, they indicate they want a special permit to raise and replace.
Okay.
And I notice that, that, that is not in the verbiage, you know, so, I'm just, as far as on...
Right, okay.
On how the agenda is written.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And I just want to point that out because, um, you know, should there be a positive vote tonight, you know, for approving the project, I want to make sure that things are written properly.
Yes.
Okay? And what I'm commonly used to seeing, raise and replace is not in there.
Okay.
So I just want to bring that to your attention, that we are tonight, you know, would be hearing a special permit to raise and replace three buildings.
Right.
Okay? That I believe if we do go forward with the decision, would have to be written in the decision.
Okay.
And it's not in the, you understand what I'm saying?
Yep.
You know, it's not, and it's not on this, but...
Yeah, it says alter, not raise and replace.
Right, it says alter.
Right.
And I, I think that's, I just want to kind of bring that out to get a correction, if that's...
Okay.
We need to probably consider that verbiage, if we go, if we go forward.
Right.
All right? Um, the, uh, so we are, just want to confirm, we're looking to raise and replace three buildings, and also handle the amenities and coverage pursuant, and so forth, okay? All right? Okay. Um, I do believe the, as far as the, you made a comment during the presentation that, that the issue of setbacks has been resolved, I mean, that was an opinion from the town's attorney, town's council, excuse me, regarding questions I had, I had posed, because just looking for clarification on that, as, as well as multiple uses in a lot, all right? The, I'm assuming we don't need, in your opinion, to address setbacks in the decision, or duly.
That's... I do not believe that we need a variance, there was a question about whether a variance was...
Right, and we, I might stop you for a second, we got that variance, the reason in, in a previous email I had with the town's council, and also discussion with the, the building inspector, building commissioner, and I do have some, I didn't pass it forward, I do have most, uh, background from an email with the town's council, basically when your, when your first presentation was done, the site plan, it, um, showed the setbacks on that site plan as fifty feet throughout the whole property.
Right.
Now, when she, when her letter back to me, basically, she considers that issue, and in her comments regarding needing a variance as, at this point, mute, because she's based it upon, you're indicating a fifty-foot setback on the original plans, which sent that whole in, in motion about the concept of needing a variance.
Correct.
Now, from her point of view now, from what I gathered, and I do have an email from her, because I asked that question, and, uh, the answer was that you had to be able to show us a site plan with the appropriate setbacks, you know, and then the, the issue about variance was now mute, so that, for her, was off the table.
Right, so that's what we did, we've, we've submitted an amended site plan showing both that the interior lot lines are removed, and we revised the zoning table to show the commercial setbacks and the other than, which includes residential setbacks.
And the one thing I learned from this case was those setbacks are, and we got use setbacks, as opposed to the...
District.
The district setbacks.
Correct.
And that's what her point of view is, and, and the attorney's, attorney's recommendation, the council's recommendation was it was a use setback, not a hot line because of that property, but based on how you use the property and the structures on it.
Right, it all hinged, at least my understanding hinged when she said there are two primary uses allowed, then it makes sense that there are two different setbacks that are applicable depending, or the setbacks are dependent on use.
Right, and, and we've all seen the other cases where patios can be right up to a lot line, because a use is a patio, so there is no setback, all right? But go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have a question on the use, though, of the two family houses, do they have cooking facilities? Do they have kitchens?
I think that there are...
They're dwellings.
Yeah, they're dwellings, yeah, yes.
And what is the average rental term on those?
There's, I wanted to clarify that. Four Cove Landing is subject to a life estate. When the McLennons, when, where Quocet sold the overall property to Round Cove, the McLennons retained a life estate in Four Cove Landing, so there's no rent paid. They have use of that structure until they pass.
Okay. That goes to the question of whether it's a residential use, which our town council talked about, so I just want to verify.
Right.
It is a residential use.
Right.
So twenty-five foot setback applies.
Um, but it's, it's a two-family, correct?
It is two-family.
So we have one family, there's a life, is it the life...
It's the structure, it's, it's, the structure is subject to a life estate, whether it's one or two families.
So, does, does one family there rent out the other side?
They do not rent the other side, they use it for guests, they do not...
I see, okay.
They, it's, um, kind of, I've never been in it, but from what I understand, and, and I think I can have Alton speak to this if, if necessary, but, um, it's only used by the McLennons for their guests, it is not rented out.
Okay. What is the expected timeframe for the project, construction?
It's off-season, so it would be, I mean, it's, the resort is, is in season until the end of October, and so, um, it would be, um, I, I think, I think they would need the full term until, I, I know with a separate project that ownership has, they're pushing back opening until May, when they might open earlier, so it could possibly be until May.
So, will all three buildings be done at once, or is this be...
Correct.
Over a period of years?
All three will be done at once.
So, you know, based upon, based upon starting this, like, if you had situation for approval, you'd be looking to start perhaps this next November, and, and then...
If there were no appeals and we had final...
No, I understand.
Yes, we would be looking to do so.
And would it be, would you be completed by May, the following year?
I believe so.
That would be the goal.
That, yes.
Okay.
I mean, an intense goal, because, you know, it's a seasonal hotel, and so they, they want to do it as quickly as possible.
Oh, sure, I understand. And obviously, you're going to be keeping all your construction vehicles on, on-site. The, uh, and actually, if we, regarding timeframes, if we, you know, go forward, I, I don't see any reason to be using any type of timeframe instructions of June thirty, Labor Day, it's all done on-site, it's, you know...
It might be better off just using it in order to keep the conversation within that timeframe.
I see, okay, so you prefer to put that in there, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is the, is a, on the, on your building coverage calculations, was the two-family included in that?
Yes, it was.
Okay. And, uh, one, again, if there's a positive, you know, if there's a vote to, in favor tonight, to give you the special permit tonight, I would like to verify that I have all the correct plans, which I'd be stamping, you know, as far as, you know, for, you know, for the filings and so forth. I believe I have this, but since there's been several different, I want to make sure I...
Of course.
I'm going to be going forward and, and recording plans, I want to make sure I record the right ones. Uh, that's more, some more questions we have, Tim?
I'm kind of, uh, gonna defer until we hear from, there's other people in the audience for questions, thanks.
No questions. No question.
No, it was a very thorough presentation by Attorney Rose, thank you, I have no questions.
The only question I have, on page five of the reasoning document that you put together, if you could help me understand the, the note about the, section three twenty-five dash eighteen E, that it provides for, I think it's basically a different definition for the amenities and facilities, should I cover fifteen percent? I'm just curious whether the current calculations and the previous calculations were done in the same manner.
They were.
Okay, so it does match up?
They're, they're matching.
The approach was the same in both?
Correct.
It might be better off just using it in order to keep the conversation within that timeframe.
I see, okay, so you prefer to put that in there, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is the, is a, on a, on your building coverage calculations, was the two family included in that?
Yes, it was.
And, uh, one note again, if there's a positive, you know, if there's a vote to, in favor tonight, to give you the special permit tonight, I would like to verify that I have all the correct plans, which I'd be stamping, you know, as far as, you know, for, you know, for the filings and so forth. I believe I have this, but since there's been several different, I want to make sure I-
Of course.
I'm going to be going forward and, and recording plans, I want to make sure I record the right ones. That's more, some more questions we have, Tim?
I'm kind of, uh, going to defer until we hear from, there's other people in the audience for questions, thanks.
No questions, no question.
No, it was a very thorough presentation by Attorney Rose, thank you, I have no questions.
The only question I have, on page five of the reasoning document that you put together, if you could help me understand the, the note about the section 325-18E that provides for, I think it's basically a different definition for the amenities and facilities, should I cover 15%? I'm just curious whether the current calculations and the previous calculations were done in the same manner.
They were.
So it does match up?
They're, they're matching.
The approach was the same in both?
Correct.
Thank you. Ken?
And I guess Attorney Rose, the only question I would have, I want to go back to the statement you made about the, the screening-
Yes.
The trees. While it's part of, just so I'm clear on this, is part of this plan, I think I know the answer, is part of this plan to screen the buildings from the abutters.
Correct.
Correct? But there's nothing that stops you from putting up that type of screening now, whether you build these buildings, whether you get this permit or not, is that also correct?
That's also correct. A fence could be put up, different things could be done.
No other questions right now.
Uh, one, if you'll, for, should you put me in? I took the opportunity Saturday night to get down and spend some time down there, and because all the questions were lighting and noise and so forth, and just wanted to disclose the board that I was at the site between nine and quarter to 10 on Saturday. I noticed that the, regarding current lights that were on the property at Two, shining over the abutters property, most of those lights were coming from the, the lights on the pathways and actually not from the, the current, the current structures. And I, are those current lights that are on there now, are, are they set on timers or are they motion, motion sensitive? Because they're, you know, the big bulbs and those, those lights that were on the pathway.
And I really couldn't speak to that, maybe hotel management can speak to that, I can tell you that the proposed lighting and we have it on the schedule there-
It's going to be changed.
Yeah, will be changed.
So the lighting that's there now is going away?
Correct.
Right, there are going to be bollards that are downward facing.
Okay, I see, because that, that was-
Yes.
-shining a lot of light at that patio area.
Right.
The, the other thing, I, I, from standing there for a while and, and then, I, because I just, again, this is one night, this is not, the, the main noise that I heard was the function going on at the other, other side of the property. I don't know if it was a wedding or not, but people were, I walked over, it was well defined it, they were having, seemed like having a good time, but that was a major noise in the area. Just for mention again, it was one night, I, I didn't detect at that timeframe that, back in, you know, between nine and, nine, quarter to 10, much noise have, coming out of the, the existing buildings that were there, of course.
And that's subject to, you know, the noise ordinance, and I think that the time that that has to be shut off is 10:30, my understanding.
At the clubhouse?
The clubhouse, right.
That was really the only noise I could hear from that, from that section of the property. Okay, I had, any further questions from the board at this moment? Well, I'd like to open this up to, you know, public discussion, and, uh, welcome attorneys to speak. I'm going to straighten my legs out after some- By the way, if, if you wanted to sit and do your presentation, that's also fine, it's your-
Come and join us.
Oh great.
Okay, I mean, would that be?
We're going to elbow you here.
Could someone pull up a chair for Attorney Riley, please? By the way, while you're sitting together, if you work things out, that'd be great, but this one-
Love to.
All right, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Bill Riley, on behalf of Dottie and Stan Shelton who are here this evening. The, uh, I, I hope it's important to note that if the board should vote unfavorably on the request, I'm pretty sure the Wacquasset is going to keep doing all those good things that Marion talked about. I don't think they're going to stop doing those things if you vote no, just want to give you that confidence. The, uh, so we believe that adding a second story, particularly the Building A, is going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. What's the neighborhood? It's the Sheltons. You know, the, the, uh, and, well, uh, Marion mentioned, well, the Rose Cottage is closer. Well, it's a single unit, it's a little bit lower, uh, and in part because of the relationship that the Sheltons had with the prior owners. You know, they didn't want to complain about anything because they were good friends, and, but the biggest problem they had was cell phone conversations on the deck of the Rose Cottage. And the, and the, and of course, the Rose Cottage deck is below their house, so, you know, it's just not the kind of problem. I mean, the, the, you know, the, the back sides of these units are exactly the same as the front side. So you've got ten-foot-high windows on the second level, and the, I think it's great that they have a turned-down service, makes you feel all comfy when you go in and get the chocolate on your pillow. Reality is, when these people come, when the, when the guests come back from their function or where they've been in the evening, or the wedding after-party, you know, the lights all come on again, the curtains open, uh, the doors open on a summer day, evening, and, uh, you know, they crank up the Bluetooth speaker, not really obnoxiously loud, but just to have music. Seems like there's a Bluetooth speaker everywhere these days. And that, you know, and the, and the thing, the thing about it is, the second story of these buildings, so, right now, the fir, the first level, the floor level of the existing buildings is elevation 27. And so, raising that elevation, and the new buildings could be elevation 32. So the building's going up five feet before they do anything. All right, first floor ceiling height is 10 feet, so the second story, where these decks are, is going to be elevation 42, which is just at the elevation of the patio, and a little bit higher than the elevation of the house. So, if, if the Sheltons were standing at the property line, uh, and somebody was standing on the deck, you know, in Building A, they'd be face-to-face, literally, and the, I know it's 64 feet from the corner of the building, but the deck is eight feet wide, so it's really only 56 feet, and, uh, you know, it doesn't take much noise, I think, I think we're all in agreement that the, the planting, the screening planting is not going to attenuate noise to any significant degree. And we believe that normal use of a hotel room, that people are on vacation, whether they're there for a wedding, you know, they have their children with them, they're having fun, we all like to hear people having fun unless they're in your backyard. So, we believe that the light from these 10-foot-high windows is going to really change the manner in which the Sheltons enjoy their property. It's going to have a dramatic effect on how they enjoy their property. And, so, okay, so the Rose Cottage is a single unit, so some guy's on a cell phone, they can hear the guy talking, but now we're going to have, uh, four units facing the Sheltons in Buildings A and B. They're going to be, the buildings, those decks are at the same height as the Sheldon's backyard, and the enjoyment that the Sheltons get now, whether they're sitting on the patio, which is partly on Wacquasset property, or sitting on the patio adjacent to their home, where they have the outdoor furniture, and the gazebo is very pretty back there, uh, that's going to be dramatically impacted by this noise, by that light, and, you know, the, and, and when do people sit on the outs, sit outside and enjoy the weather? In the summertime. And that's when the, that's when these units are going to be most heavily used, uh, you know, they could rebuild these buildings as a one-story unit. You know, if you walk around Wacquasset, if you look at the plans they gave you, they did this today, you know, the, the, the one difference between this building, these buildings, and the other one-story buildings, is that the other one-story buildings, if you double them up, they block the view of other Wacquasset buildings. If you look, you know, if you look at this plan, you know, all, you know, there are a couple of two-story buildings right next to A and B, but then you have all these, all these buildings leaning over towards the outer bar, they're all single-story, you know, and they could double the height of those, you know, if they need to add rooms to pay for the cost of the place, uh, you know, but they don't do those because they know that those are going to interfere with the property behind them. So, they go to, they go to a unit where, you know, none of their properties are behind them, so it's not going to bother their properties, it's only going to bother the neighbors. And in a very dramatic fashion. I mean, theoretically, if you're at a resort and they're, you know, when the people in the next building are having a good time, you're having a good time, everything's cool. If you live next door and you just want to sit out on your back patio and enjoy a summer evening, you know, you're going to listen to not just the Rose Cottage, now there, now there's the Rose Cottage and four other units that are at the same elevation. And, you know, another property than the building is the fire pits and the hot tubs. Now, they're in a lower elevation, uh, I believe, they're, the elevation of those is 37 feet, which is the first floor elevation of the, of the units. And there is a bank behind it, as we know from the site visit, so they have a four-foot wall, or less than a four-foot wall, and then it, you know, it's not vertical like this, it goes back to the property line, you know, so it has 50 feet to fade back. There'll be noise from those as well, that isn't there today. You know, you know, so, right now, there are four units, pardon me, eight units in the building, oh, six, was it six units in the building? Four units in each building.
There are four units in each building.
Right, so, and the, as you know from walking around them, the other day, there's no hot tubs, there's no fire pits, so, uh, there's been effectively no noise. There's no outdoor area on the existing buildings where people can hang out, listen to music, have drinks, have a laugh, you know, but now, all the units, and they're 24, right, in the two buildings, are going to have outdoor spaces that don't exist today. And so, those are the changes that make a dramatic and negative impact on the shelter property, those are the changes that are substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So, there are different ways that the inn can accomplish this goal, you know, but this was the easy way, because it doesn't block any of their views, you know, it's just the Sheltons. And the, you know, the, the, you know, so those are the, I mean, that, light and noise are the principal concerns. And it's a resort, people are going to be having fun, uh, and they don't have to be obnoxious to make enough noise to disturb the pleasure the Sheltons get today from sitting in their backyard on a summer night. They just have to be, uh, eight, 10, or 12 people, you know, having different conversations. Four people over here, four people over there, four people on a deck, four people on a deck, there are actually four decks for them to sit on, you know, and all they have to do is have a little music playing, have a little conversation, have to speak over the music so the voices carry, you know, and, you know, and then, okay, we're at a resort, we had a wedding, are we going to turn the lights out at 10 o'clock? No, because we're still going, you know, and, and the, you know, so, yeah, there are trees there, the gloom of the light, we've all been out in the evening and seen, uh, the light that gets cast even through a tree, I mean, if you look at the windows again, windows are 10 feet high. So, the, uh, they're going to be, I think, easily throwing a loom of light in the direction of the Sheldon property. Now, it's not going to be shining in their eyes, but it's going to light up their backyard, so they won't have to worry about tripping over the dog when they go for a walk, because they'll be able to see fine. Will they be able to read a newspaper? I don't know if they can read a newspaper, but there's going to be a lot more light in their backyard than there is today. And those are the changes. You know, just conversational noises from eight more units that are all at the same elevation as their backyard, that's what's going to be more detrimental to this neighborhood. So, so the ridge of the building is going to be 52 feet, because they're 30 feet high. And where are they putting the mechanicals? On the roof. It's another source of noise. Now, I know modern mechanicals are, you know, designed to be quiet, but still, you're going to have mechanicals for, what, 20, 24 units? I mean, it's, so there'll be noise from that as well. So, uh, rebuilding these as one-story units with the modern amenities, the fire pits and all that, we think that is one way to do it, and take your other ambitious designs, your desire to keep the five stars, and take the other buildings they have that are already did a two-story, did a one-story, turn those into two-story buildings, so they don't bother the neighborhood. The decks are eight feet wide, you know, back in my day, I could party on an eight feet wide deck, but there'd be room for people to be out there, just conversing. So, and there are four of them, not just one or two, there's four of them. You know, so those are the, those are what we think are the issues that make the project substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Now, my friend, Mr. Ford's got some issues he's going to discuss with you as well.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please. Oh, were there any questions on the board, Mr. Riley? Just for you to get some.
Are we going to let Attorney Rose respond to that, or do you want to have a response after?
Actually, I will, that's a great, great thing. Attorney Rose, would you like to respond to anything that, that Attorney Riley said?
Oh yeah.
Or Attorney Ford, no, please say-
Or you can just keep your notes and respond.
I have notes, and I can respond at the end.
Whatever you want to do.
That would be fine.
Okay.
Thank you, David, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board, Mike Ford, I'm representing the Sheltons along with Mr. Riley, and Bill has focused on substantial detriment. I'd like to talk about the bylaws a little bit, and about process. And so, it struck me, Mr. Chairman, when you picked up on one of the things that I had picked up on earlier, when you said you were reviewing the application for this, and you didn't see anything in it about raise and replace. The way this got here was fairly unorthodox. They applied to the planning board for what they're asking you for tonight, under a special permit, which is a result of a subsequent opinion from the town council's office opining that that was the wrong section to apply under, they needed to apply under 325-54B, which they're under tonight. I had anticipated, as did Mr. Riley and I think others, there'd be a new application to the zoning board of appeals under that section. There was no new application. There was, I guess, an amendment, and then there was a slight change in the legal ad that talked about an expansion of hotel motel. Nothing in it about raise and replace of buildings, the number of buildings, the size, going from 6,000 to 16,000, none of that's in the ad. I think there's a notice problem. And I don't think you can cure a notice problem by simply saying, so it sounds like what you really want to do is raise and replace, I know you didn't put it in your application, you talked about it in your materials tonight and your subsequent submittals, but when I write my decision, if we find favorably, I'm going to write it about raise and replace, even though it wasn't in there. Now, why is notice important? Notice is important because that's how people see what's going on, they read the ad, they see what it is, and there is nothing in there that notifies the public of what this project really is all about. So, I'm here tonight, so I'm not prejudiced, I know what's going on, but I think there is an overall notice issue.
If I could just ask you a question about that. Where, there's just your client, who's been showing concern regarding the project, and no other abutters or people in the neighborhood, and, and, and the Sheltons and yourselves and Attorney Riley and yourself, Attorney Ford, have been updated regarding this project since early in the spring, about every aspect of the project, hasn't there essentially been proper notice of what they're doing?
No question, I'm not suggesting, as I, as I ended up saying, that I'm prejudiced, because I do know what's going on.
Right.
I, I have been getting copies of things. But notice is for the general public. Notice is for those who read the Board of Appeals ads, and it, it's just like notice at a town meeting. You can't vote on an article that wasn't in the warrant. Notice of a Board of Appeals meeting, you can't grant relief that wasn't asked for. Doesn't matter whether everybody shows up and says, oh, we knew what it really was.
The, and actually regarding granting relief, and, and it's interesting you should say that, because when I had read the notice originally, I, I seeked an opinion from the town council regarding, sure, at the meeting, uh, we look at- regarding, should at the meeting, we look at a variance. This is when the idea of variance was still on the table, you know, and I didn't, didn't have the explanation from the, from the town council.
Well, I don't know when variance ever came off the table, to be honest with you, because this is the first public hearing we've ever had on this thing.
I apologize. Well, I was saying, regarding the notices and all the applications and so forth, okay? But, but as far as the opinion of the town council, when she originally had said, indicated a variance was needed, it came as a result of looking at the site plan at the 50-foot setbacks. And once she had, had, and then based upon that said, "Well, if you're doing a 50-foot setback, you need a variance." Once the site, site plan was corrected, she looked at that, and her opinion was at that point, the issue was now mute, that the 25-foot setback to the use was what her opinion is, was the important feature of the, of the, of the project there. But also during her, my discussions with them, she indicated the fact that, let's see if I can find it here, should, as long as there's been sufficient notice given regarding the applicant's attempt, attempt at what, intend, what they're doing, the board could consider, you know, an application for, you know, going from a special permit to a variance as long as notification was properly given to all the abutters and so forth on the intent of the project. And I, and I, it, I see in this particular case, at least, at least my opinion, that there's been proper notice given to the, to the, the primary abutter. But you're suggesting that other neighbors may want to get more involved, have even...
Yeah, I can speak for myself and my clients. As I said, I've been advised, I'm, I'm not complaining that I didn't know what was going on.
Yeah, I just looked back at town council's opinion, and probably if we were gonna go forward with any relief, if that was the decision, I think we'd have to ask the applicant to go forward at risk if the applicant feels the notice is not sufficient, or the applicant can amend and come back next month.
Right.
But that would be the, the town council is indicating that would be the applicant's decision if the board determines there's a notice issue.
Right, no, I understand. And I, I brought it up earlier because I was...
Ford's point is well taken, I think.
I don't, not disagree with that.
Okay. So, I wasn't gonna mention that, but when I heard you going back and forth with Attorney Rose, I, I said, "The chairman has seen the same issue that I did. It's not in the papers as to what was actually going to happen." So, having said that, I'd like to focus on, on the bylaw, 325-54, and the requirements of it. And to do that, I'd like to talk just a little bit of background about the history of the inn as it pertains to this particular project. We believe that the buildings in question, three buildings, that they've brought before you, and as pre-existing non-conforming hotel buildings, non-conforming in terms of use because they've applied under, under B, were authorized probably in '67. If you read my, Bill and I's supplemental opinion to the town attorney, we attached a, what we found at the registry was a, a 1967 board of appeals decision authorizing 20 or 30 units. And then, if you look at the assessors' records, these buildings, the three that are before you, are listed as having been constructed in 1969. So, it looks like there was a relationship between that permit and these buildings. And that was granted under the non-conforming section. So, all that's good. Fast forward. At the time those buildings were built, the Cove Landing lot was not part of this property. S1, S2, S3 on the assessors' map, 115, that was the locus. And the hotel was operated for many years on that. In 1997, the owners of the inn bought Fort Cove Landing. And then, as Attorney Rose pointed out, in a prior filing before the planning board, not before the board of appeals, they included Fort Cove Landing, I think it was in 2004, and sought relief similar to what they're seeking tonight. And never built those units. Importantly, the location that they had got approved by the planning board was not on Fort Cove Landing. It still stayed on the S1, S2, S3 lots. It didn't go over the line. That's a significant factor, in, in my opinion, and I'll get to it under the bylaw. So, from '69 to '97, Fort Cove Landing's not part of this site. Now, after 2004, when they got that relief from the planning board and then decided not to build those buildings, as you can see in the supplemental opinion I filed with town council, they brought Fort Cove Landing forward as a separate project to the building department and sought a building permit to make an entry, a kitchen addition, major interior renovations, window, door replacements. I provided a copy of the building permit that was issued in 2014 for that site. This is after they owned both of them. They now own this, '97 they owned it, and they were operating the inn on the other units. So, contrary to what they had gotten in the planning board decision to include that as part of the hotel, and council's been pretty clear at every hearing, Fort Cove Landing has never been used for hotel purposes. It was used, however, as a, a residential dwelling. Now, the whole question of the two-family has just been kind of glossed over. There's a two-family, by everyone's admission, there's no special permit that granted a two-family. In this zoning district, to get a two-family, you need a special permit. Town council simply glibly referred to it in her opinion and said, "Well, the owner said when they bought it in '97, there were two units in there, so it must be pre-existing non-conforming." Well, it isn't pre-existing non-conforming because you can't build a, a two-family. And the provisions of the bylaw that protect after 10 years don't protect use changes that are done illegally. So, I'm not so sure about the status of, of the two units. And I don't think the building inspector was in 2014 because one of the conditions of the building permit was that the property be used as a single-family dwelling. It's right in the building permit in 2014. So, the other thing that interests me was in 2014, they filed a site plan to get the benefit of making these changes on this residential lot. It was granted. Why? Because they showed this lot as a separate lot. They leveraged that, they got permits, they made all sorts of improvements to the single-family dwelling. Single-family, I'd suggest by virtue of the building permit card, which I found no evidence it was ever appealed. So, that happened in 2014. Now, we get to it today. And when they applied, the first thing I saw was, gee, how are they doing this? They got, these are two separate lots. Well, the first position that the inn took at the planning board and then at subsequent meetings with town staff, well, it was authorized to be used as a hotel back in 2008 by the planning board. So, we, we've already been over that. It's already done. And so, I then looked at 2008, I looked at all the other permits, and then I found this building permit in 2014, and I said, "Well, they may have got an authorization," they think, although it's not specific in 2008, "to use landing as hotel, but they never exercised it. I think the permit with respect to that has lapsed. And even if it hasn't lapsed, they've taken affirmative steps to use that as a single-family home and go and get a building permit separately, kept the lot separate, and leveraged that and made improvements." So, I said to myself, "How can they possibly include Fort Cove Landing when they determine the site coverage for their hotel?" Because they were using the area of that lot to run these numbers that they've given you. So, town council suggested that, well, maybe it's merged, and cited a couple of cases. And the merger cases that she cited, I don't think factually apply because they dealt with a single-family home that's on a, a lot that doesn't have 40,000 square feet. In this case, this one has 38, next to vacant lots. That isn't what this is next to. It was next to a fully improved commercial site. I've never found a case in Massachusetts where a single-family home on an improved lot, protected under the grandfather clause, has merged as an operation of law with a commercial use that's been developed on the adjoining site. It just, because the purpose of merger is to make something more conforming. You don't make the single-family home any more conforming by merging it. So, they then seemed to kind of not focus on that any longer and say, "Well, we're gonna file the 81X plan. We'll, we'll make it one site." Okay? So, they filed this 81X plan, I think it was done in July. So, after this amended application was filed with you, I had checked the registry, it still wasn't done. Now, it's done. They filed this merger plan, they say, "Oh, it's all set. We're on one site now." But what's happened? You've taken a house that was on a separate lot that got the benefit of a building permit just in 2014 as a single-family dwelling, and they're now taking the lot area around that house and they're utilizing it for hotel purposes. It's figured in their calculations for their site coverage, their amenities coverage. They're, they're using all that area in doing those calculations. If I'm wrong, jump in, but I think you are. Right. So, I said to myself, "What's happened to the single-family or two-family use? How can you just take a, a, a single-family home that's on a lot?" And our bylaw's interesting. It says you can only have one single-family home on any lot in the town of Howard, on principal dwelling, on any lot in the town of Howard, in any zoning district in which a single-family home is allowed. Now, I suppose somebody would say, "Well, that doesn't apply here because, yeah, there's other buildings, but they're hotel buildings." Well, the intent of the bylaw was, when you had a principal use as a single-family home, it had its own lot. It might have accessory structures, but it was the principal structure on that lot. And that's what the bylaw says. All of a sudden, this is gone. Tonight, oh, it's all merged, it's one lot. I'm not so sure that that merger hasn't created some zoning problems. And I, and I think if the building commissioner looks at that closely and looks at the 2014 building permit, he may find those. The other issue here is, I don't know how it became a two-family dwelling. And the way the statute's written, seven, eight, and 15, or 40A, the time, if it's been there since before they bought it, and I believe them, if it was there in '97, that doesn't make it pre-existing non-conforming. Pre-existing non-conforming is something that took place before the bylaw, which prohibited it, was adopted. It's black letter law. There's no evidence that that occurred here. But, so, having said that, I then went to the section they've applied under for tonight. And everybody seems to just be glossing over the first paragraph of B1. Except single and two-family dwellings provided for in section A5 of this section, a lawfully pre-existing structure, whether conforming or not, used for a lawfully non-conforming use, we have one here, hotel use of these three structures, by special permit be changed, altered, or raised and replaced with a new structure on the same site. Now, what does that mean? I'd respectfully suggest, having looked at this bylaw for many, many years, the same site means the site upon which the non-conforming use was constructed and used. And what was that? It was this site, but not Fort Cove Landing. By their own admissions, never been used for hotel purposes. The purpose in that section is so that the board of appeals, when they do a raise and replace or something else, can't move it to another site. Keep the non-conformity on the site that it was developed on. That's what "on the same site" means. I respectfully suggest you can't go out, get an extra lot next door, use that as a residence, develop it, and then all of a sudden do an 81X, and the lot line's gone, and now it's the same site. I don't think it works that way. I think same site, if you read this correctly, is the site on which the non-conforming structures were constructed these many years. You can't go off that site. And that's why I think, back when the planning board in 2008 allowed this previously, this building that comes on to Fort Cove Landing did not in that plan. It did not cross the lot line. Now, it does. So, now you got this issue. And so, they've run around and filed this 81X, and I'm not sure what that means for zoning compliance with respect to that house, but I don't think it qualifies under B1. I don't even think you get by B1 because it, it's being proposed in part on another site. And the other site is Fort Cove Landing. So, I, I think there's a problem with the way this is designed and is currently pending before you and your ability as a board to grant it. Now, that term "same site" is used three times in this section. It's used up above in A5 for pre-existing single and two-family residential structures, limits those to the same site as well. It's that same phrase. And if you go and read each one of them, you come away with the conclusion that what same site means is the site on which the lawfully pre-existing structures were existed and used, not something else you acquired and then merged it and made it big, and now we're gonna move it over there. Not under this section, you can't. With a variance, you can, but not under this section. Respectfully, that, that would be my view on this. So, I think that what's before you is something that doesn't qualify, frankly, for B because it's not something that you can approve under B because it's not on the same site. Now, the other thing is that you asked, Mr. Chairman, and, and I, I think you got it from town council's opinion, as to whether or not the, the single-family home was accounted for in all the calculations that we have.
I asked about two-family homes, not the single.
The two-family, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Same structure.
Right. I just wanted to qualify the fact that all inquiries regarding a two-family structure.
Right. And so, I looked at the tail of the tape on the plan, and I tried to figure out where it was included. And I'm sure Coastal, sitting next to me, can, can help with that. But if you start at the top of the table, required lot area, it doesn't mention any lot area that's needed for the single-family home that exists there, 3,000-square-foot structure. I, I don't see it there. I do know that the area of that lot is being used to satisfy their site coverage and give you all the good numbers that, that Attorney Rose has given you tonight because they've utilized the, the land area of the single-family house lot. But where is the house included, if I may ask, in, in the table?
Well, it's included in the area calculations for the buildings, the square footage of all the buildings on the site were included.
Okay. So, so which number includes the single-family home? If I'm you, I didn't mean to start.
No, that's fine.
Yes, through the chair, some in response. Under building coverage, where that square footage is indicated, that includes all the buildings on the parcels, including the subject loan that we've been discussing.
So, it's in, under proposed, 313,070?
No, it's included, well, it's included both because it, existing is what's existing and the new areas are what's...
Okay. So, it's in existing and proposed?
Correct.
Okay. Is it used in any other, other than building coverage?
Through the chair. So, it's in the building coverage and then whatever the site amenities that, that go with it as well, you know, those area computations. So, you know, essentially, it was, it was, just like every other structure on the, on the lot, was used for calculation for both the building and site amenities in, in those calculations. So, that would have been in what's called the existing, and then the proposed is, is just what's proposed.
And so, the circular driveway as well?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So, it looks like it was included. However, I don't know how you, you get over that first part of the bylaw that says this has got to be... you, you get over that first part of the bylaw that says this has got to be on the same site, unless you take the view that, well, same site can mean I've got a non-conforming use on parcel B, and now they've acquired another lot, parcel A, and under this section, I can do a raise and replace and put part of the building that's always been on B where the non-conforming use is over under that. Keep in mind, this is not an allowed use on Fort Cove. It needs a special permit. So this is introducing the non-conforming use onto that site. So I, I'm scratching my head on this one, Mr. Chairman. It's, I, I haven't seen anything like it, and I, I don't see, frankly, how that's what was intended by the bylaw, that you can extend the non-conforming structures to a site that was added on after those structures had been constructed and used for all of those years that they claimed are non-conforming, which they were. Those, those buildings were non-conforming. So I, I'd ask that back and forth with, with the town attorney, or town council, I should say, here. And it would be great if, if we all had an opportunity to have counsel at a meeting and maybe, or you, Mr. Chairman, as the representative of the board, could get some guidance on this whole question, if the board wants to, about same site and about what are the implications of this eighty-one X plan, particularly in light of the building permit that issued in two thousand and fourteen?
Now, regarding guidance, I practically on my knees for guidance on this, this project. So I, and I have been asking the town council, you know, more than once for, for clarity, which, one of those, I sent you folks email this morning. From what I understand regarding, and I'm just trying to find her email, regarding merged, merged properties, I think Town Council had, and I gotta find it here, had referred to one of her initial, initial opinions was that since both properties became, even though they're under separate ownership names, as of ninety-seven, when Closet, you know, Round Cove purchased the property at Fort Cove, that the merge doctrine is that if properties are held under the same control, that essentially are, need to be, need to be considered merged properties.
Right, but, but, but there needs to be a, a reason for the merger.
Well, not necessarily. From what I, I mean, again, we.
Not, not every property.
I'm not the one with the, with the degree. I'm not an attorney. But from what I read, that basically, and what the attorney, attorney, Kizwall had, Council had said, was that basically, you know, because they're under, under the same control, even though they're under two separate ownership groups, but under the same control, that since ninety-seven, there were essentially existed merged properties, which Round Cove has now filed eighty-one X to now make it, you know, of record, but essentially existed as merged properties, you know, for the last twenty-six years, etc. The, what is the size before the merger? What was, what is the size of four, square footage wise, of Fort Cove go on?
Thirty-nine thousand square feet.
Couldn't give me forty, huh? Thirty. So it's thirty-nine thousand square feet. Okay.
And where was that allocated on their sheet to the single-family house?
It's, well, yeah, I look at it as a two-family house, but I understand what you're saying. And I'm, I'm still a little confused regarding the two-family as to when it, he's saying originally was a single-family, when it became a two-family house and how that was approved.
And what I could say, speak to that is I know from talking to Alton that, who spoke to McCollum, but it was a two-family house at that time. But regardless, I mean, that is a separate issue than, like, if, if there is a zoning violation related to Fort Cove Landing, that whether or not it's was established before zoning came into, before zoning came into the town of Harwich or not, like, that's a separate issue than what's before you today, permitting this.
I realize that. I mean.
Well, with all due respect, though, it really isn't, Mr. Chairman, because this proposal is utilizing that lot area that supports that house for hotel use.
Just one moment for you.
Hotel use.
And I agree, but let's say it was, right now, it is, I asked, we asked a question earlier, how is it currently being used? And I understand it is, it's being used as a single-family house, being used, and there's room for guess, that there's not a separate lease regarding the second home.
That's correct. The reason it's a second, a second dwelling is, I think there's an oven. I think there's a, you know, cooktop and an oven in this.
So essentially, it's, it's use right now, that structure is residential. It was built to be a, or is redesigned or remodeled at some point to be a two-family. But whether it's a two-family or a single-family, that would be, I think, an issue regarding how they were right now leasing or renting it out. And since it's not being rented out as a two-family, but strictly as a, as a single-family, I'm not quite sure. Regardless, it's still a structure with a residential use on a common lot. And whether, again, how it's being addressed and used, whether it's a single or a two-family house, that, that may be something to deal with on other permitting and how they handle, you know, mailboxes and leases and so forth and rental. But essentially, it's a one residential structure, a residential use, and per Town Council, you can have more than one use on one common lot, on, on individual lot.
And I would argue after the eighty-one X plan was filed and recorded, or was recorded and filed and the plans were changed, then this is one site and one lot. I would also just quickly mention that when RH two district, there's contemplating these two uses are allowed, the residential use and the hotel motel use. It's pretty unique. It is unique in the town of Harwich. But these two uses are allowed, one by special permit and one by rights.
David, I apologize. You're going to ask.
No, it's okay. I, I just wanted to point out that by letter dated June twenty-first, twenty-three, our Town Council said, in my opinion, provided the lots are merged either by the merger doctrine or preferably by the recording of a GL Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one X plan, the relief required is a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals to alter and expand a non-conforming use and structure on the property. And she cites C three twenty-five fifty-four B one. So obviously, Town Council thinks after the merger, it's one site because the form of relief is a special permit under three twenty-five fifty-four B one. I appreciate that. I, what I'm respectfully suggesting is whether anybody read that first section of three twenty-five B, first paragraph, with Council asking what same site means. Okay, no, I, I understand. The fact that, I, I don't agree with you, and neither does our Town Council. We need to be guided by counsel, not necessarily the abutter's attorney. So I just wanted to point that out to our board.
No, but, you know, obviously, the point of view is important here. I mean, I think.
Well, no, I understand. He's certainly entitled to represent the abutter with his point of view.
Absolutely.
The purpose of the board, we need to. Right. You need to decide what that phrase means and how you've applied it previously and whether, whether you've ever used that to go on to another lot before. Well, our position has always been each application is unique and whatever happened in the past happened, and the facts are going to be different most likely, and who remembers? So we look at each case as it comes before us with the facts presented by the applicant's attorney and anybody that's objecting to it. I'm sorry. Thank you.
One last thing, as you were reading that, I'd also say that my amended application tracked the language that the Town Council said alter and expand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I, I'm sorry. Turn it forward.
I just have one other.
Yes, sir.
I might as well just throw it out there. With respect to the ability to have two principal uses on, on one lot, which Council said she found no prohibition for.
Correct.
She didn't see, didn't say it was. She found an authorization. She just found she couldn't find a prohibition.
Yeah, and, and.
There is a section, three twenty-five eight.
This is all.
Applicability of use regulations.
Which, which, I'm sorry, what number?
Three twenty-five eight applicability, applicability of use regulations, down three quarters of the way. Any use not listed shall be construed to be prohibited. So the question is, are mixed uses?
Well.
I mean, this isn't listed, that you can have two principal uses on a lot.
First of all, it isn't, it is prohibited as well by code. There's nothing in the code that says you can't have more than one use. And, and there are several, there are several lots in town, and in many towns, where there's a single-family house on the lot, and then a special permit is applied for, for the, for the people to run their business, you know, whether it might be a mechanic or, I mean, I, I haven't seen it in hotels, but I've seen it with shops, mechanics, you know, barbers. I mean, you know, having a separate building.
Those are bylaw specific generally.
But there's a second use.
Authorized by a special permit.
We had one here just last month or two months ago where, you know, single-family residents in the front, in the front, and, and there's a business in the back in the garage operating as a, as a separate use. And it was, and it's allowed, again, these have been allowed. Now, I don't, in looking at where the code was that allows that, you're right. I couldn't find, and in my letter to the attorney, to the council, I said, where is it? Because I don't see a code that says, authorizes two uses. And she came back and said, no, you know, it's, it's, she agreed, and she indicated her opinion was, you can have two, two uses on a single lot or common lot, and that their setbacks or structures had to be based upon the use, which in this case, residential.
None of which is listed in the bylaw.
But it's, it's not listed against it. Okay?
Right. And, and that's why this phrase is important. Any use not listed. That's what the bylaw says. Any use not listed.
But that use is listed.
It is listed, but it isn't listed for two principal uses. So what does that mean? It means in the RH two district, you can have a single-family residence on one lot.
Actually, I understand your point.
And then you can have a hotel on another lot. But it doesn't say you can have them on the same lot.
But it doesn't say you can't. That's, that's my point of view.
That's where that phrase comes in.
And I believe that's Town Council's point of view. I'm just, and I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm just trying to, again, have a discussion as to, if you understand what I, what I believe right now.
I understand you.
You know, and, and following Town Council's recommendations, that's what my, my opinion is. I don't know what the opinion is of the rest of the board, but, but, you know, that's mine. But again, the, I do believe in, in discussion here that the issue of whether it's a, that, that house right now, whether it's being used as a two-family or a single-family, it's a residential structure, and I don't believe that clarifying the status of a two-family, should they want to use it as a two-family and rent it out to two separate people, I don't believe that that is an issue at the moment regarding this application of this case because it is a residential structure. And whether it's two-family or single-family, I don't, my personal opinion is, doesn't impact the decision.
Okay, so it was authorized for a building permit in two thousand and fourteen based upon the lot that it sits on. And it's no longer on that lot anymore.
I understand. And I'm not disputing that. And at this particular point, because of the merge doctrine.
And a hotel use is going to be on it now.
Followed up by eighty-one X, there, there appears to be one common lot, which, and if we, based upon my understanding, if today we just started off with this acreage fresh, perhaps, you know, you can have, you can build two, like many parcels in town, there are more than one use on, on a single lot. And I, I do believe that this does indicate, that does show that there are two separate issues, I mean, two separate uses with, with the proper setbacks per the recommendations from the opinion of Town Council.
Okay. And, and just not to beat a dead horse, but.
I understand.
The bylaw does say that the replacement structures have to be on the same site. Now, English language, same site means the site that the existing structures are on. Well, that's your position. That's not Town Council's position. I also point out that Field versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Greenfield, seven Mass App, Appell's Court two eighty-six from nineteen seventy-nine, held that in the absence of specific zoning provision defining a lot, not a site, they talk about a lot, I think they're the same, but defining a lot in terms of sources of title or assessors' plan, plans, the Supreme Judicial Court has consistently held that adjoining parcels may, and indeed in certain instances, must be considered one lot for zoning purposes. Right. When there's a, when there's a, there's a reason for it. In other words, if it becomes more conforming. I agree. That's what the case is saying. Merger has given us one lot, one site. So it, to me, it's on the same site.
Chairman?
Yes.
Could I ask for Attorney, you were going to have a rebuttal. You had a few things you wanted to bring up. I'd like to hear those.
Sure. I think I've addressed, as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Ford's comments and, and with the comments from the board. But in terms of Mr. Riley, I believe he made the point, can you hear me? I believe he made the point that the four units are what he's concerned about, not the patio units on the, on the ground floor. I believe he made our point as well, and that the noise he was, noise he was discussing is reasonable conversational nor, conversations. And that's something that I don't believe is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than, I mean, even if it's possibly twelve people over an area, than, I don't believe it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I don't think that rises to the level of that. The same kind of noise could be, could happen if you have a residence nearby. I believe that the more intense use with a hotel motel use, that when people are designing the bylaw to have a further setback, a fifty-foot setback as opposed to a twenty-foot or a twenty-five-foot setback, that's the kind of thing they're taking into consideration. Would you like the hotel motel use to be a little further away from other people? Yes. And so that is what's happening here. We are over fifty feet away from the residential lot next door. And if you all would like to hear from either Alton or Josette, I don't want to take a ton of your time, but if you would like to hear from them, how they deal with noise personally, as a resort, representative of the resort, rather than hearing from their attorney, they are right here and they're ready to speak to you if that is something that would be helpful to you in your decision.
Continue, the board.
I have one question. I'd like you to address Attorney Riley's point that the neighbors are the neighborhood.
I don't believe that the neighbors are the neighborhood. The neighborhood, I mean, actually, there was someone here for the entire, for my entire presentation, who is a neighbor from directly across the street on twenty-eight. He's roughly a hundred feet away from the Shelton's property. He was worried because he thought that the Shelton's property was involved in this work, and so he came to listen. There are neighbors up and down twenty-eight. I mean, the abutters list is, you know, people who get noticed for this. They are the neighbors. And then the extended, the district and the town, they're all affected.
Thank you.
The request was, actually, Attorney Rose asked if anyone wanted to hear from people regarding security and so forth. I just wanted to.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, all right.
So what are we going to do? Close the public hearing or?
Yeah, well, it's, is there anything else in the public that wants to speak to this, this case?
I'm going to move to close the public hearing. I'd second that.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Let me just, I just want to. Ken, you second that, correct?
I didn't.
Okay. All right. Now, we entertain additional discussions. Other board, we got any application?
Yes, I think, I do not feel that this proposed.
Yes, I think, I do not feel that, um, this proposed project will have a substantial adverse effect on the neighborhood. I understand the abutters are concerned about it. I also think the applicant has bent over backwards to try to. Impacts on the abutter. Um, I believe the doctrine of merger does give us one site here, and I think the town council has said that to us, and I think that's what we need to be guided by. I turn, I appreciate the applicant's, I'm sorry, the abutters' attorney's positions, I, I don't agree with them. But, um, I do think if we were to approve this, I would like a condition that we make part of the approval, the summary of reasoning, and the condition be that the applicant has to fulfill all of the positive statements in here that they say they're gonna do in a timely fashion. I do think we need that, there's a lot of representations, and I know they're made in good faith, but the best advice I've ever had in my life was trust everybody, but always cut the cards. So I'd like to put that in as a condition that in a timely fashion, they actually live up to all of the positive.
Repeat that again, Dave?
Would you repeat that again? I think the applicant, as one of the conditions, perform in a timely manner all of the representations that they make in the summary of reasoning presented to us by Attorney Rose. Um, do we have a date?
It's, um.
We don't have a date on it, but, um, we'll just, we'll attach it to the decision. All of the positive representations they make as to what they're gonna do, they actually do in a timely fashion. So that way, if there's any issue, if they don't put the sixteen-foot trees in, um, we can go back and, actually, we could pull the, pull the building permit if we wanted to. I, it would never come to that, but, um, the other thing I'd like, I know they're gonna do it anyway, but again, I, you know, I like to be fair to the abutters too. We're not trying to be unreasonable here, we wanna try to protect them to the extent we can. You know, if the board's gonna approve this, I do think we want another condition in that, and I'm sure they're gonna do it anyway, but the condition that the applicant will maintain the tree buffer, so that if one of the trees dies, they promptly replace it. And, uh, maintain including, you know, trim them, they, we don't want a jungle up there either, they should look nice for the abutter, you know, nicely trimmed. And I, I know you're gonna do it, 'cause you're gonna run a resort here, but I just, I'd like to put this kind of stuff in. I also do think, as I said, and this you'll have to ask Attorney Rose, I, I think Attorney Ford's point about the notice is a good one, and which you also raised yourself, Mr. Chairman, that we should give Attorney Rose and her client the opportunity to, if the board approves the special permit, either go forward on that basis, or at their own risk, recognizing there could be a challenge to the notice by someone, or let the applicant, uh, continue to next month to come back with, um, a renotice, to spell out the raising and replacing of three buildings, and, excuse me, maybe in a little more detail, exactly what you're gonna do there to put it in the notice. I, I think that is a fair point. The notice is a little sketchy, given the size of the project here. And one more month, I would assume won't really cause a problem. You're still gonna be in August, you're not gonna start work in August, so. But I think if you, once, you know, we have a little discussion and maybe take a straw poll on what's gonna happen, then you might want a little conference with your folks and decide what you wanna do.
Yes, thank you.
That's all I have.
Yeah, I'd, um, I raised a point regarding not seeing the raise and replace, and I was concerned about that, and I think, uh, Attorney Ford pointed out that I really can't argue his point, that, that it could have been a clearer, um, notification. And so it does offer, there are some doubts there. And, uh, you know, I, I would also feel better if that was squared away.
Right. I have my appeals counsel here, so I'll take a moment and talk with her.
Okay. So, I do, do agree with David.
I'd prefer to have it in there, raise and replace.
Yeah, me too, and that's why I brought it up, that I didn't, I realize now that comment was made and the notification may not have been proper.
You're reading that list, raise and replace is actually part of the notice.
No, you can't, you can't, yeah, that's right. Um, anyways, it, you know, the board will certainly, I believe, consider approval based upon the notice as written, and word our decision based upon that. Um, and, uh, but I do think you're, you know, the, the granting of the special permit might be stronger against appeal, should it be rewritten. And I had originally thought we could rewrite it, but I believe that I was incorrect in that, that assumption.
Is it possible to have a straw poll, um, excluding the issue of notice? And then if I could take two minutes and talk to.
Take five.
Okay. But could we have a straw poll, is that possible?
All right, and, uh, again.
Can I ask one question before we close out the question session? Just curiosity, when did the Sheltons purchase their property?
Nineteen eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven.
Thank you.
So first reminder, as far as who's voting tonight, is, is Al Dunia, myself, Dave Ryer, Timothy Bailey, and, and John August. Okay.
I should, I have a question too. Um, not that we're gonna take the, like, the applicant's attorney understanding, but is it that we want, you know, we'd rather raise and replace, or raise and replace has to be there?
Has to be. Well, I mean, no, it does not have to be there, then, but is, is, is the, the consideration is, i- i- if we write a decision without it in there, you know, is it not as strong as it could be, you know, as far as, you know, on that decision? You know, and, uh, that's all. But, you know, we could vote tonight regarding how it's written, how, how the notice is written. We can vote on that, and that's how the decision will be written. We, we cannot put in, I reckon we don't put in raise and replace, 'cause it wasn't out of the notice.
Uh, just to Tim's point, I'm looking if I can find it again. When I quoted from, uh, town council's opinion, and now I can't find.
David, I think it's right here, you wanna look at it? Where she talks about raising and replacing?
Yes, thanks.
First paragraph.
Thanks, Ken. Um, no, it was, where does she say it?
Uh, first paragraph, she talked about raising and replacing, right there.
Yeah, but somewhere.
Uh, relief required.
What I was looking for, she said that she made the assumption that the, uh, that the notice in the application talked about raising and replacing.
Is under relief required?
Under relief required, right here.
In my opinion.
In my opinion, the relief required is a special permit.
But anyway, at some point, she said she made the assumption that the notice talked about raising and replacing the buildings.
Right.
So she was assuming that's what the notice said, which it doesn't, of course.
Well, it, it, from my point of view, it, it, it may imply it, but it doesn't, it's not clear.
Right, but she was actually saying that she assumed it had been stated in there.
In point of fact, um, in the notice for the planning board, which is where this originally took place, the expansion of the hotel motel use was going to be granted through, or considered through the planning board.
Right.
That's where the raise and replace was. When I read this, and it says, the note, um, the relief required is alter and expand, that's what it says here. I mean, I understand your point about raise and replace, but I followed the, I tracked the language of the town council and asked for the relief to be granted through the ZNBA.
Right.
As town council said.
I understand. Um, so you, you're looking for, I'm happy to, you know, I'm gonna do a, do a straw, did you want a straw poll first, correct? Okay, it, uh, Al?
I'm in favor of it.
I'm in favor. David, Ryer?
Yeah, I, I really think they meet the, the bylaw, that there's not gonna be any substantial detrimental impact on the neighborhood of this structure. And I don't, I think it meets the other two requirements, that it's not gonna cause or contribute to any undue nuisance, hazard, or congestion in the neighborhood, zoning district, or town, and that the replacement, alter, or change structure will be used for the same use or for conforming use. So I, I think they're entitled to a special permit.
Uh, Tim?
In favor.
Charlie?
I'm in favor.
So there's your straw.
Thank you. I'll just take one moment if you don't mind.
Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
This is the note that I was reading, oh, you probably, is that the same one?
Yeah.
June twenty-first, where she makes very specific discussion to raising the three existing one-story building?
Yes, the, the attorney does, and the council did, but it's not in, it's not in the, not in the notice.
It was never printed that way.
The notice that the, the applicant did, it's not in.
That they printed in the newspaper?
Right.
I think the one thing you might be thinking of is, I think it was an email response where she said that she would assume that the.
Oh, here I just.
Notice was sufficient to alert the neighborhood.
Yeah, I finally found it right there in front of me.
Project to be taken place, right?
Right.
But, but you're right, it doesn't say raise and replace. I would just feel better about raising and replacing, but if they wanted, you know.
Up to them.
They're gonna have it.
Door's been opened.
I actually had it focused on it, because my feeling is, it's up to the applicant to ask correctly what they want. Hard you ever look at, if they put in there?
Yeah, no, I hate to do the other person's job for them. That was one of my legal maxims. When, yeah, I first read it, I said, I saw that you amended the application filing, I mean, the notice, I said, I said, I don't, it's not enough. I get later on reporting for next year, and I mean, you, you want this? And we're back.
I'm back. Okay. Um, in an abundance caution, we will reapply asking for a raise and replace of, under three twenty-five fifty-four. Um, so we'd ask that the, we'd ask the hearing be reopened. I think that needs to happen.
Or continued.
Or contin- right.
Because I think, here, and you, first of all, you, we did a written document, I believe, back in March or May, which gives for opportunity for continuance of six months.
Right, okay.
And, um, so we're still under that timeframe.
All right.
So I, I believe the correct format here is for you to request a continuance, which then, um, the motion will be made and the board will vote on.
I think she's right, we have to reopen the public.
We have to reopen the public?
I think so.
Yeah, we would, yes, you're absolutely right. We have to reopen the public hearing.
And just to clarify, do I need to amend my hearing request, or do I need to request a new hearing with the amended, with the language we've discussed?
I don't know.
I, I don't know, I'm not a zoning lawyer.
Okay, okay.
I think you need to decide that.
I'll figure that out, okay.
And you need to write whatever you want.
I'll do that.
And add to protect your.
Certainly.
Your client. I mean, I'll, I'll move.
I, I don't know why it would, I mean, if you, I don't know why it matters, if you, if you're doing a new app, if you, well, I know the difference is, whether it's, and you're gonna send in, you, you can certainly send in as a, as a, you're amending the application, but writing that amendment is a new, reworded, an amendment to, you know, adjustment. So I don't.
Right.
I don't believe this, I don't think it matters either way. We're gonna continue the meeting, and then any decision we make is we, is gonna be, you know, how you write your case, you know, application, is what we're gonna use in the decision.
Okay, thank you.
So we're.
So I would like to move for continuance, and ask the board to open the public hearing.
Okay, the motions, uh, can I state the motion?
I'm gonna move that we reopen case number twenty-two-three dash zero-five, the public hearing, and furthermore, that we continue the case until, uh, as the first case at our, what's the next mini-August meeting? Will it be August thirty, twenty-two-three? And that, um, with the understanding that the applicant will either amend or, uh.
Refile.
Re, yeah, recast the, um, the filing to correctly reflect in the public notice the relief requested.
And at which point we'll, we'll reopen into the public meeting as well.
Yes.
Now, um.
We need a second and a vote.
Before the second? Oh, good, I think you're second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And, um, just wanted to get, on the current voting members, and people actually in all the board that is here tonight, is there anyone here that's not gonna be here for the August meeting?
Well, I'm a voting member. I'm not gonna be here for the August meeting, but I'm not a voting member on this case. Well, but you could if somebody else. I'm, I'm not going to be here in August. You're not gonna be here, okay, so we, we still have six. And normally, what we've done, if we only have four, we give the applicant.
Well, the other thing is.
Chance to come back and go for it with four.
Again, also, what, I forget what it's, it's called, but, like, tonight missing is Chris Murphy, he'd be able to, to watch the video of this and read it, and sign an affidavit and so forth, and then he can become a voting member.
Right.
You know, on, on this. Okay, um, any other questions of anybody?
I'm checking the vote on the motion.
Hey, we did vote.
You gotta vote, I work.
We did vote, okay. Thank you.
Alrighty.
Okay.
Sorry to keep you so late.
Gentlemen, it's, it's fine, it's.
We anticipated as much.
Yeah, I know you did.
I learned a lot, huh? Yeah, 'cause you're gonna be changing a muzzle, actually, you just toss it, 'cause it's not.
Oh, all right.
'Cause at this point, it's not any good. Okay, does anybody need a break before we go on to the rest of the agenda?
Let's pile through. What, you do?
Okay, let me just get my. Uh, guys, please, uh, keep all your materials.
I could plug them and I could bring them back.
That'd be great. Let me do that, that way.
Just leave the seat of my car. If you make any changes, you have to.
I'm not making a change.
Now, is that, does that encompass all the plans I would be stamping?
No.
So just make, just.
That, I will make sure that every, the landscape plans, I mean, they're, they're proper plans.
So if you could, the next meeting, bring one set in. I know I just grabbed, and I can use that to stamp.
Certainly, I would do that.
Okay, appreciate it.
Good luck.
Oh, wait, we got one more set.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Okay.
What I, um, I'm happy to do, if you think it'll help us, I'll go through the, um, statement of reasoning or whatever, and pull out all of the positive statements and just make a list, and we can clip it to the decision.
That'd be great.
Write it down, or I won't remember them.
Okay. All right, I misplaced my agenda, though I do know it.
Oh, here it is. Is it a lie they put everything on top of it?
You know, I bring a file-
Yeah.
Just for the purpose of the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, approval of minutes. Did everyone take the opportunity to read April, May and June?
Yes. I did.
Okay, is there, um, does anybody have any corrections to those? Do I have to call each one separately to approve, or we just approve all three? Okay.
I skimmed them, I, they had Ken's name wrong and one of them my rank name wrong and another one, but I don't think that makes any difference.
Further on, the names were corrected.
That's not material.
Okay, so-
On the, uh, the June one, I just, so it says vote six nothing in the first case.
Oh, see, that's not good.
Yeah, then there was, uh, six, six. It changes to five, there's, it was only a couple.
All right.
Yeah, the first three are six, the rest are five.
Yeah, we probably can't have that in minutes. Good catch.
It lists six names too, though.
Just, it's just the first two?
Yeah, I mean, it looks like then there's another one on, so let me get, uh, so the first, second, third.
Oh, the third's got it?
Fourth.
Oh, yeah, I see, okay, yeah. All right. Okay, so get that fixed, take care of that.
Uh, seventh.
Um, okay, I'll, I'll plow through this real quick. The other day, I was, um, you still on new, okay. All right, new business, board reorganization. So we have to nominate and approve chairman and also a clerk.
I nominate Brian Sullivan as chairman.
I'll second that. Oh, there it is. All who's in favor?
Aye, aye.
This happened, this happened last year.
He was doing a great job. I think you need another year.
No, no, I actually, no, I, I'm-
Assuming you're-
After the first year, I, I, and you know the experience, I, I feel that I'm starting to feel like I know what I'm doing.
Yeah, you're digging in, you're doing a great job. I'm not, I'm serious.
Okay, so it's a lot more to learn, you know, but-
I'd like to nominate Alexander Donahue to serve as clerk.
Second.
Yeah, second.
Third? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Okay. One of these, this is gonna be your turn, David, just, just in your knowledge. Because Dave wore a tie one night to one of our meetings, and I thought that was executive material.
Never gonna happen with that.
Okay, so, last week, no, Monday, was it last Monday? No, last week, yeah, last week, I was invited to a select board working group meeting, which was a select, a selectman, there was also Duncan from the planning board, I forget the lady's name, from, um, one of the planning committees in town. You know, anyways, it was a discussion related to potential zoning changes to increase housing in the town. And, uh, just, I brought up to them, but, real quick, you had five items on the agenda. First one was converting single dwelling homes to three-unit houses, which is homes, which I said, I don't know, I asked the question, how to go for single and whatever, to two-family houses, but anyways. The, uh, there was a discussion about that, and it, and basically, at that point, most of the discussion was over. I pointed out to them the issue that you can have multi-family, three or more in town on a non-conforming lot, but you can't have a two-family house on a non-conforming lot, and I brought up the issues with, with five, um-
Yeah, about twenty-eight.
Five bell, well, well, one was, was, was room twenty-eight.
Yeah.
And also I pointed out where they, they approved five Bell's Neck, which was under thirty thousand square feet, and now there's seven units going in there, you know.
The old school.
The old school.
Yeah.
But Bell's Neck, you, you, you know, you, so people with non-conforming lots in town, they have to go to a three or higher number of units, and they can't, on a non-conforming, put up a two-family home. Okay, so basically, that, that was a lot of the discussion, and they, everyone in the board thought multi-family meant two, two or more. Pointed out some that, as we learned here, that it's three or more. So that was part of the discussion. Then there was discussion about apartments over commercial buildings. And, um, the idea being, you know, to motivate more of that. Of course, one of the selectmen in town pointed out that pretty much, most of the opportunities for Howardport, as well as downtown, for that type of situation, were already underway. Of course, the other issue that came up regarding apartments or commercial buildings was, where are these people gonna park? And there was discussion regarding shared parking, where, you know, someone could have parking in the, you know, in the CVS parking lot, but shared a CVS and also shared with the people living in the, in the house above, okay? So that was part of the discussion. Then they came up with the veil deed restrictions. Now, I had to look it up. Are you familiar with the veil deed restrictions? Okay, so here's a quick thing. In Vale, Colorado, there is a, there is a fund, which people are, are paid, or you actually, you, you wanna buy a house, whatever, or multifamily condos, where you're given money from the town to restrict the deed so that it's only for, you know, single-family use, whether it's a condo or a single-family home. And then cannot be rented out for recreational purposes or weekends or whatever might be, you know, in Vale. They're trying to, they're losing full-time residents and wanted to maintain that. So that was part of the discussion. Uh, and now Vale does it based upon people who have to live, have to work in the, have to, people who are working in the community for five years or more, or retired in the community after working in that county for five years or more. That's how it was structured. So you can actually apply and, you know, get a check for seventy thousand dollars from the town, you know, towards your mortgage, and then you have deed restriction. So those are about, and there's been a push on the area to do that, the people-
That's a voluntary program, correct? Not mandatory?
Well, it's voluntary.
Okay.
Yeah. So anyways, we brought that up. I'll tell you what I got into in a minute. And somebody wanted to, brought up restricting Airbnb's to commercial zoning, which was shot down in about thirty-two seconds. Being the fact that, A, a ton of people in town rent out their houses, and B, this community and their businesses depend upon tourists, you know, and, and restricting to commercial was not the first, the first course that the, the selectmen want to get into. You know, plus the, you know, I, I brought up, I, I've owned a house here in Howard for eight or nine years, with the first five of it. I owned the house, but I rented it out in the summers, you know, before I moved on in full-time. I mean, how do you, again, the, uh, then any other items related to zoning? So that's when I piped in further. I mean, a lot of it, these discussions around zoning, and I was educated a few of them regarding some of the zoning rules. First of all, I brought up to the fact that, let them know, because it, five, five, um, Bell's Neck wasn't the last government building that sold in town, because others have been-
The Baptist Church has the same restrictions.
Right. So-
That's to be made affordable.
And that's, and what's gonna happen, the Baptist Church is gonna be actually taken over by the town and then sold. So I pointed out to them the cases that I uncovered regarding gunman, the planning board of Cambridge, that meant the fact that when a, on a building already had a, it was a, when a government building is sold, uh, any non-conformity is approved automatically, and the next buyer, the private owner, does not have to go in front of the zoning boards and so forth. They may have to, perhaps, they may still have to, but they're governed by that law, and we don't have to jump hoops to try to figure out a variance or whatever to approve non-conformity of someone who buys a public, a government building.
For the purpose of housing.
Actually, no, for private use, a private party, it could be purpose for anything. They, they wanna put up a general store, that's fine. The idea was, you, like, you buy a government building, and it's five feet too close to the lot line, you know, then you have to go and get a, a variance? No, the, the idea is, if you buy a government building, whether you're gonna make a, make it into a supermarket, or you're gonna make it into, you know, a five-family house, you're, you are already, according to case law, you know, um, the non-conformity goes along with, to the private party. The, uh, then I discussed one over again, the fact about special permits for two-family houses on non-conforming lots should be the same as multi-family. Then I asked them regarding, because they're trying to create new housing, and I said to them, this is, you know, enjoyed the meeting here so far, but what's, what's the goal? Are you trying to increase housing by, you know, for, for, the original housing, for workforce housing, and anybody else, you know, working in the town of, town of Howard, increase workforce housing is the main emphasis. And, and also take care of property so that there are more properties available for all the, the part-time people that, that are needed in town for the businesses. And, uh, so that, that was up the discussion, and I, it, uh, I, uh, asked them again what the goals are, whether it's fifty houses, you know, fifty more units a year, a hundred, two hundred, what's the goal? You know, and use that to determine, you know, what we wanna do for projects. But I, I pointed out to them, doing minor things such as we did with the ADU, you know, uh, you know, auxiliary units, as well as passing a new zoning regulation to allow two-family construction on non-conforming lots like a multi-family, might help, you know, little piece at a time. Could be five more units a year, could be ten, whatever. But as far as a bigger goal, I pointed out to them, they need to look at, at how to improve, um, you know, density in town, particularly where there's, you know, sewers locations. So they're trying to increase housing, you know, if there are opportunities with land that it's on sewer particularly. Uh, and I also pointed out, there's a, there's a new, uh, F forty-B and F, there's a new forty-Y that's out there that, that, um, allows the town to set up special zoning districts for putting, you know, four houses on a forty thousand square foot lot. You know, to, to increase for, for workforce housing and affordable housing. So I, I, that was pointed out to the board as well. So, that, um-
If, if the goal is permanent residence, I, I think, you know, and-
And workforce, it's workforce housing.
A lifetime approach to it, right, is that people are gonna start out with a starter home and move to a larger home. They're gonna have to find a place to do higher-density housing.
Yeah.
You know, that's not gonna, with the next sale, be turned into a vacation home. Um, and maybe with some deed restrictions on it, that says you must be year-round, or you can't rent it for more than X number of weeks a year. It's the only way that you can get there.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, everything else is just, you know, dancing around.
We gotta start. And they did bring up, um, East Howard, you know, one, at one thirty-seven and, and thirty-nine, that whole section down there. There's a lot of, it was more like behind where that used car lot is, that's being sold, maybe be sold. There's a lot of property in that area there that they need to take a look at, how do we create a housing atmosphere in that, that part of town?
Got a supermarket, it's-
I mean, it, it's not gonna happen. Builders aren't gonna build it unless they put up a ninety-five or a hundred unit place.
Well-
Because across the street from that used car lot, eastward has a model home at two-point-seven-five million. So who's gonna build a starter home across the street? Nobody.
No, but if they get into density housing-
Yeah, but they don't want density housing. They oppose the fortyBs. They don't want density housing.
That's all snobzoning, it goes back about thirty, forty years.
Yeah, so, so I pointed out to them, you're not gonna accomplish your goals, perhaps, until you stop looking at how you improve the density and, and get into situations like that.
They don't want that.
You know, that's, that's-
Because the neighbors don't want it.
You know, so that's pretty much, well, again, it all depends upon what the neighborhood is, like, you know, down off of Queen Anne, the Queen Anne where the, that next forty-B may be coming up down there for, you know, for, so that's, those opportunities where there's a lot of woods, not a lot of neighbors, you know, that, that came up. But, uh, and also how do you develop a community so it's not all the neighborhood is going out onto Route one thirty-seven or a major road? You know, how that happens, so-
It seems like they're, but this is the case with probably everything we can talk about today in politics, is they're trying to make too many people happy and not make anybody happy.
Well, exactly.
You know, it's like with the Baptist Church.
And that's why it's not gonna happen.
It needs to be torn down, you build something that, right? It's not, they're gonna, not gonna get an economic proposal for that. You have to take over maintenance of the graveyard as well as build, you know.
Oh, the graveyard's included?
Yeah, graveyard's included in the proposal.
And the neighbors fought the six-house, um-
And you're gonna convert an old, old church into apartments? That's not gonna be economical.
No.
To be, to affordable apartments? It's gonna be a fortune to do that. They're not gonna get any proposals.
Though when they, they had a, a walkthrough, I guess, four contractors showed up.
Yeah, no one from the town.
And no one in the town showed up.
It worked out well, yeah.
They had, you know, so anyways, that's, all right. I believe that covers anything I have for agenda items. Oh, um, and, uh, I've heard nothing, again, on fortyBs, I've heard nothing about quality, so just let you guys know that. And quite frankly, at this particular point in time, I, I question whether that's gonna happen the first place.
My guess is they're still trying to get that environmental restriction lifted indeed.
No, they got it approved. They didn't?
They got it approved by the town.
No, the state approved it.
I thought it was just the town, the conservation commissioner.
No, the state, my understanding, because my, my reading of it, they got it approved by, by the state.
I didn't think so.
Because that's when I thought, when that all happened, and the, and the, the state situation came even before the town, they got approved from the state, I believe, before they got, went back to conservation in town. So that's when I thought, now that, that was all approved, I was going on vacation in, in January for a handful of days, and thought, okay, this thing's gonna land, so I, I sent all the notices out, everybody, and said, you know, and make sure everyone was gonna do what had been done while I was gone, but I haven't, we haven't seen anything. And I, you know, at this point-
Of course, interest rates now, all the economics have changed, so maybe it doesn't make any sense at this point.
Yeah, so anyways, it's just, uh, you know, hey, but we, we all know a lot more about fortyBs, so we're ready for the next one. All right, um, I can entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.